All right, Mayor, I think we can go ahead and get started.
Excellent. Well, today is September 7th, 2021 for our regular council meeting. Call into order. Just to give notice to the public, the City Council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice and discussion regarding any of the following agenda items. Roll calls. City Manager.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, if you don't have a screen working for council committee like us, would you please take a minute to try and correct that?
Yes, please. Yeah. Otherwise, we're going to play roller derby up here. Let me see the screens. Yeah, thank you.
And we are ready to stream now, too?
Ah, poor Stacey. For those who are watching through the live stream, we're just having a few technical difficulties right now, so we will be with it shortly.
So we are streaming online, it appears, so we're good to go there. You guys are just not going to be able to see it in that small screen up front. So we'll just roll with that this go around, but I think we're in good shape and good to get going. I apologize for the technical difficulties.
No problem whatsoever. All right, well, I think we're ready for roll call then, Ms. Saltzberg.
Thank you. Mayor Deasy?
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Councilmember Aslan?
I'm here.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Salas?
Fully and physically present, here.
Councilmember Shimoni?
Here.
Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Saltzberg. Councilmember Aslan, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Certainly. Please stand if you're able.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Sweet, would you like to say our mission statement?
I would be honored to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. We're down to agenda item four, which is the approval of minutes from previous meetings. A foray is a consideration approval of minutes for work sessions and regular sessions from September 17th, 2019, through June 22nd, 2021. Staff recommended action is to prove the minutes of these following council meetings. I motion to approve.
So moved.
I have it seconded by Councilmember Shimoni. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. We're down to agenda item five, which is public participation. I do have a speaker request card here from John Conley, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is John Conley. I am a resident of Flagstaff for 35 years, and I come here simply as a resident, a concerned citizen, and somebody who's really enjoyed following local politics my entire time here. When I first moved to Flagstaff, Chris Bavacy was the mayor. Anybody remember Chris Bavacy? 12 years he was on. And then it was Donaldson, and then it was Sarah Pressler, and then it was the lawyer, Neighbors, and then Cora Evans. And I've watched closely and intently over these last 35 years, and I've seen some pretty heated arguments, and I've seen consensus at the end of all that. I've seen what it takes to run city government. I've seen arguments happen, and I've seen resolution. And I'm deeply concerned about this idea of consensus and the chances of this council moving forward in light of our current leadership. I'm thinking back to February where Mayor Deasy had to make an apology, and he said that in that apology, it was to Flagstaff Shelter Services, where he said that his words were not fitting of the honor of the office of mayor, and he followed that up with, it did not help with building consensus with issues facing Flagstaff. Ms. Sweet, I think you said the city charter or mission just a minute ago. I hadn't heard that before. It's like five words. What was that? To?
Protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
To protect and enhance the quality of life for all. Consensus, I believe, is the foundation of what it needs to occur on a council. And I think it's going to be very difficult for this council, even though there's a lot of bright people, to find that consensus with the current leadership we have. I mean, it's possible to burn bridges that cannot be repaired. And the one thing I've seen is a lack of consensus, but I've seen character assassination. I've never seen what's occurred with Mayor Deasy in my life. Name-calling, character assassination. How does this council plan to come to a consensus when there's a significant lack of leadership? And so I'm compelled to ask for two things today. One is to lose that large hammer. I don't even know what that is. And two, to formally ask for your resignation in hopes that this council can move forward. It's an incredibly important time right now.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Thank you. Do we have any speakers from online at this time, Ms. Saltzberg?
Mayor, yes, we do.
All right.
I'm still struggling with some technical difficulties. Let me see if I can make this work.
I think, this is Rose Tohe. I think I'm next. Can you hear me?
Yes, Rose, we can hear you. You can go ahead and speak.
Awesome. Thank you. Yatay and good evening, Mayor and Council, city staff and community members. My name is Rose Tohe, and I'm the Indigenous Coordinator for the city. And I would like to go ahead and just take a few minutes to inform you about the upcoming Indigenous Peoples' Day. And this is coming up on October 11th. So as last year, we are still in uncertain times, so the programming for Indigenous Peoples' Day will continue virtually. I am requesting you all to save the date. This year, per comments and recommendations, we will scale down the programming from slots to about four. So this year's theme is honoring the sacred elements. There will be four presentations on the earth, the air, water, and fire, framing them as Mother Earth, Father Sky, and grandparents, water and fire. So this is more details to come, and I just want to thank you for your time and just give it back to the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tohe. Ms. Saltzberg, do we have anyone else on electronic public participation?
No, I believe that was our last one. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us down to proclamations and recognitions, and since I don't have individual directly present to hand this to, though we do have members from the Commission on Diversity Awareness, I believe tapping in electronically, I appreciate you for being here. And I'll be reading it from the dais since we'll need to get all up for it without another individual to take it. But, "The City of Flagstaff celebrates the rich cultural traditions and proud ancestry of Hispanic Americans, and recognizes the vital contributions Hispanic peoples have made to strengthen and diversify our community. Hispanic families resided in Southside or Old Town areas of Flagstaff beginning in the 1920s, accounting for 30% of the total population. And Hispanic Americans have influenced Flagstaff and continue to play an integral role in shaping, developing, and creating a vibrant city. And the Flagstaff City Council established the Commission on Diversity Awareness to advise the City Council on issues and methods in promoting diversity awareness within the City of Flagstaff. And the Commission on Diversity Awareness recommended the designation of September 15th, 2021, through October 15th, 2021, as Hispanic Heritage Month, in unison with national and statewide observances. Now therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2021, as Hispanic Heritage Month, in Flagstaff in recognition of the history, heritage, and contributions of Hispanic peoples of this great land." Yeah. Probably be for the better. All right, we are...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I move that we move Agenda Item 17, which is informal items and reports from council and staff, and future agenda item requests. I move that that be moved to right now. If I can get a second?
Second?
I have a motion by Councilwoman McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Salas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Sure, whoever, since you made the motion, you're welcome to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I prepared a statement, which I'm going to read right now. Last Tuesday, Paul Deasy berated four of our fellow council members on Facebook because they did not attend an emergency meeting that he called with less than 24, less than 25 hours of notice. First off, the subject was not truly an emergency. I did attend the meeting. The council members that did not attend were out of town representing the mayor and council at the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, their conference, or had made other commitments because the regular Tuesday meeting had been canceled. His charge that council members do not value health and safety, and that they just casually skip council meetings, is completely unfounded. It reminds me of when he accused the Flagstaff Shelter Service Administrator of being responsible for threats on him and unsubstantiated attacks on his home, all without evidence of her responsibility. At the council meeting when he attacked the Shelter Service Administrator, he also attacked Councilmember Shimoni. Unfortunately, there have been a series of personal attacks from Mr. Deasy. I am very reluctant to call out another council member in public, but in a non-public setting, I have already asked Mr. Deasy to attack problems and to refrain from personal attacks, to no avail. From this day forward, we must accept our differences and treat each other with the respect that we all deserve. The citizens of Flagstaff expect no less. Personal attacks on fellow council members and members of the public will not be tolerated. They must cease immediately and permanently. We are seven members, and each of our opinions have an equal weight. Except in a few special cases, none of us have more authority than the other, and that applies to the mayor as well. I hope that we can end the drama, which wastes our time, so that we can focus on community issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. I also have a statement prepared, and it's touching on the events of last week. The emergency meeting called by our mayor was made after we, as a council, voted not to have our regularly scheduled meeting due to the majority of council being down at the league conference. I believe in the importance of all seven of us being on the dais while making important decisions that our community has entrusted us with. Unless the issue is a true emergency, the public deserves enough notice to be able to attend council meetings and to have their voice heard. I take pride in conducting myself with respect for others and with dignity for my position on council, and I promise to keep the best interests of our community at hand. Mayor, I hope you will take those words to heart, and as we move forward as a working body of seven, make that same promise. We have a lot of work to do, and it will take us all working together to be effective for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, prior to attending the Deasy League of Cities and Towns on Monday... Last week, a day before the Arizona League of Citizen Town Conference started, I went on a tour of the Arizona Pipe Trades Apprenticeship Training Center in Phoenix, wearing many hats, including Flagstaff City Council Member, a board member of the Economic Collaborative of Northern Arizona, and a board of Coconino County Workers Development Board. The intent is to bring that training center in Flagstaff. It currently trains about 700 apprentices in the pipe trade sector, including pipe feeders, plumbers, HVAC refrigerators, and welders. I even tried welding myself. So bringing the training center to Flagstaff will galvanize the pipeline for the best skilled and certified journey persons, not only in Flagstaff, not only in Coconino County, but throughout the Northern Arizona region. While I was at the Arizona League of Cities Conference, I attended a couple of major meetings representing the city in the absence of mayor, which was I was allowed to do per councils discussion in the meeting held on August 24th. I also met with Transportation Board Directors Gary Knight and Jen Nichols, wearing my hat on behalf of the Metropolitan Greater Flagstaff and its liaison to the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council. This Thursday, I'm going to the state capitol to lobby for $50 million for rural transportation infrastructure in rural Arizona. And please call me lazy.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimoni?
Thank you, Mayor. Gosh, what a time we are all living in with this current situation that we find ourselves, right? This is our team, right? We're here to work together and serve the community. And as Councilmember Salas said, you know, we each bring so much value to the table, and I respect each and every one of you. Even though we have differences at times, I see the value in each of us. What happened last week, Mayor, was unfortunate in my eyes. It was very unfortunate. You know, I expect better from us as a body. And, Mayor, I expect better from you as our chair, as our voice, and representing the city. It was embarrassing. You know, I felt embarrassed for the city and for the council, and the lack of apology is concerning to me. You know, and I know in your eyes, you probably feel that you have your own righteousness behind it and your own feelings about what happened. But I hope that we can take a step back and see that what we're doing today is not working, and this is not a productive way to move forward. What we did last week is harmful to the integrity of the city. And that's really what's on the line here, is the integrity of the city, all of our staff, all of our leadership, all of the public. And I know so many members in the public today who are afraid to come and speak in front of us because of our actions as a council body. And that's just unfortunate. And I don't know how we're going to repair those bridges. It's going to take a lot of work. I would like to apologize to the members of council who were publicly called out. You know, I really feel for you all, and I feel like that was really inappropriate and not right. I don't feel like that was respectful to you all, and I personally would like to apologize as a council member to you all. What we do to each other, we do to ourselves, and we need to keep that in mind. When we point and inflict things at each other, we're harming ourselves. So let's start doing better for ourselves and working that way moving forward. So how do we move forward? How do we repair these relationships? Mayor, I don't know how we move forward. You know, is a retreat on team building appropriate? Honestly, I don't know if it's going to work or be effective. I don't know. But we need to find a way to move forward and move forward united for the sake of the community. This is not a positive trajectory that we are working towards. We must rise above this sort of behavior and do what it is we were elected to do. Enough drama, enough egos, enough of this BS and social media, you know, name-calling and finger-pointing and whatnot. I expect more from us and better from us, and I expect each of us to look in the mirror and really think about what it is we can each do moving forward. Anytime you feel like you want to point your finger at someone, look at all the fingers pointing back at you. Take responsibility, be humble, and let's do better. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually don't have anything else to add on the subject right now, and I don't have any other informational items or future agenda item requests at this time.
Please, Mayor.
I would just like to say that the City Council wants to be working on behalf of the Flagstaff community rather than addressing both publicly and in person your behavior. Our community deserves to receive professional and factual communication from each of us, whether it be at council meetings, via email, or through social media. Your words and your actions reflect upon the entire community, and I implore you to take your responsibility as an elected official seriously and conduct yourself accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I hear you. I wanted to kind of explain the sense of urgency that I felt about this situation that was not very well communicated. So regarding the wastewater, which we will discuss here shortly, wastewater testing had been a successful program in the springtime with FUSD and NAU, and the results are there. I found out only recently that this program was discontinued this school year, so I made some calls. The school district was interested in continuing it, and lab space at NAU was available for it. NAU offered to waive their overhead costs totaling $52,000, and FUSD had $36,000 available to work.
Mayor, pardon the interruption. Point of order?
Sorry.
That item and agenda agendized on the expenditure of less than $50,000 on wastewater testing for COVID in public schools, that's an agendized item.
It is an agendized item. I understand the mayor is explaining his reasoning behind calling the special meeting that several of you have addressed. Of course, that's up to you as a council, whether, Mayor, if you want to continue that or make a ruling on whether or not you should be able to continue that, that's going to be up to you and then up to the council.
I'd like to continue unless you're looking to place a motion. All right. Inevitably, I didn't ask for 30 minutes for a special meeting. I didn't think it was going to be a long meeting. I asked for 30 minutes, not for me. I wanted 30 minutes for your time for the nurse who called me on Saturday, on the edge, in a very dark place, facing yet another COVID hit to our city. I did it for the woman whose two-year-old grandson couldn't get a doctor appointment in time due to the pediatric offices being utterly overwhelmed. And by the time they did, a single ear infection led to a sinus infection and the child's eardrum rupturing from the pressure. That poor child was in severe pain. I did it for the single mom who called worried about the possibility of the elementary school closing due to outbreak and how she was going to make rent if she needed to stay home with her seven-year-old. These stories from our community and more are what created a real sense of urgency to me, especially as I found out that this program hadn't continued, that had been successful, and was a means in which we could really help. I'm not here for me. I'm really here to help, and I understand that that does not get communicated well at times. But, and yes, my ego can be big, and I need to set it to sight. The words, chosen verbiage I used, completely unproductive. It was not respectful, and is something that's going to, that can interfere with our ability to get many other things done to serve the public and be able to act upon the stories that I am hearing. So I could belabor this more, but I will just say that right now I have a real sense of urgency to do something over COVID. Our healthcare system is maxed out, our pediatrics offices can't keep up with demand, and people are getting sicker and having longer recoveries for an assortment of illnesses, not just COVID. It affects all public health, and this means more working families staying home longer, worried about how they'll keep their homes and feed their families. It means that, I mean, we have a middle school that just closed down from an outbreak. This seemed very urgent to me, and I just wanted to get 30 minutes to get it done. Again, was not communicated well, and I need to speak more to the fact of the stories I'm hearing that I'm trying to fight for, and realize that a more respectful tone towards all of you... all of you, a respectful approach, building, building bridges, is the way we can actually get things done for the city that I want to see prosper. So with that being said, I think we can get on to our regularly scheduled agenda. Thank you. That brings us to Agenda Item 7, which is the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is now a revised agenda format. We are front-loading a few items in hopes to provide you with more information on the front end of these busy agendas and allow for a little bit more business and action items, decisions on the back end where there can be more opportunity for public participation. So in that vein, you have in your packet the September 3rd City Managers' Report, a usual array of topics, of things that are occurring behind the scenes, some interesting stories, and then a couple of attachments. I'll talk about the text of the Managers' Report briefly and then also briefly touch on the attachments. I would invite you to review those items if you have not already at your leisure. We hope you find them informative. In the Managers' Report, I touch on a number of things that have occurred of late with our fire department, some heroic actions taken. There for your reading enjoyment. Again, I would like to call out briefly because it deserves mentioning the achievement of firefighter Kyle Denham, who as a fire officer from the, was designated as a fire officer from the Center for Public Safety Excellence. That credential is a sign of commitment to the profession and to professional development. So we want to extend our great appreciation to Kyle Denham for his remarkable achievement. Pardon me. There are some updates with respect to human resources. I think I will summarize by noting at the organizational level, we continue to be challenged with our recruitment processes, and we're trying to be creative when we can. Some divisions are quite a struggle these days. So that is mentioned here and also in a little bit more detail in the Budget Transmittal Letter, which appends or is attached to this City Managers' Report. An update from our police department, including a number of accolades received from the community. We thought those were rather heartwarming, and we wanted to share them with you. There are several. We make mention of the appointment of Pastor Nathaniel Bradford of Mountain View Church, who is now the lead chaplain with our police department. Congratulations, chaplain. In public works, also a number of updates. I will not belabor. I would invite you to give those a read. And community development, same comment, an update on the Foundation for Senior Living facility, and a couple of other pending projects. Made mention in the recent events and meetings of the participation at the Fourth Annual Community Welcome, which is now two weeks ago, a number of elected officials and the mayor included were participants in that. Thank you so much. It was very successful. Thank you, of course, to our neighborhood, Up Campus Life and Neighborhood Liaison, Vela Dye Chase. Appended to the report, give me just one second to pull this up, please, is the Budget Transmittal Letter, which went out with the budget, oh, a couple of weeks ago before September 1st. I want to recognize the amazing efforts of Heidi Dairy Berry, who is charged each and every year with the daunting task of putting together our budget. She does an amazing job, and she did an amazing job this year. The letter in front of you precedes the entire budget package, and when these letters are written, they're intended to provide a bit of a snapshot as to what is happening in the city, some trends. We don't talk too much about past occurrences, but sometimes to help complete the story we do. But it's an interesting read and one intended to enlighten and inform in just a few pages. Actually, it's more like 10 or 11 pages, but it's a good read, lot of graphics. So again, intended for a general audience. If you have not done so, please give it a read. We talk a bit about priority-based budgeting, of course, and the economic conditions of the city, which of late are quite positive. There's a graphic there that really tells the story when you look at our general sales fund, general fund sales tax revenues. I would point you in that letter to the general fund expenditures. There's a graphic there that shows our expenditures, and what's of interest there compared to last year is that of the personnel services and the pension, which together, personnel services, meaning staffing out of the general fund comprising about 55% of our general fund expenditure. That's a good number. That's a competitive number, something we've been working hard to achieve. And then when you add that with our pension liability, which is now 6% together, and the pension payoff, of course, is looking years and years ahead. Because we paid off the unfunded pension liability of last year, our pension obligation has reduced from one year to the next. That's also a good thing, and will free up a lot of funds within our general fund for other expenditures. Collectively, those two items now then comprise of 61%. A year ago this time, they comprised about 70%. So we're making good progress on staffing costs and pension payoff costs, and that in turn is good for the community. A little blurb about the recession plan, of course, now that's a bit in our rearview mirror. Earlier during the council recess, the budget team took action to have the city emerge from the first phase of the recession plan. It is no longer being applied. We are free and clear of the recession plan. It will stay on the books as a tool for future economic downturns. I will note what I already alluded to before. There's a nice narrative about the organization, the city organization, where we are staffing-wise and more specific to my comments earlier, where we are with employee retention and recruitment. I characterized that before as being a challenge for us, and it is so, and we're doing what we can. And I think we are no different than many other employers, especially large employers in the area, in this area, but this, this is a trend everywhere, and that is we're just having a hard time recruiting great candidates to come into our workforce. The numbers are down, and the field of candidates is, you know, I, I don't want to overstate here. It's not that we're not getting qualified candidates, we're just not getting many of them. Stay tuned on that very important topic. We will continue to update. That is something we will emerge from eventually, but right now, it's, it's fairly tough for employers in the hiring market. Some miscellaneous updates, I will not belabor. There's a nice piece on what's going on with the Pulliam Airport, our Flagstaff watershed protection plan, the Rio de Flag project, some transportation issues. And then, of course, the letter wraps up with a nice little narrative provided regarding the completion of the municipal courthouse. Enough on the transmittal letter. The other two attachments you have include the monthly update regarding capital projects. Way too much for me to cover. I would invite you to give that a read. There's a nice map at the beginning to show you where the projects are and a very nice summary of the status of those projects. Thank you so much to the Capital Projects Team for putting that together. You also have a nice monthly update from sustainability, same comments. We appreciate the efforts. Council, do you have any questions of me at this time?
Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was pressing the wrong button here. Mr. City Manager, my gratitude to everything you do for, for the city and Team Flagstaff. Could you speak to the 3.5 million RACE grant funding that the city submitted in the last couple of weeks?
Thank you for that, Councilmember Solis. I can summarize by noting that we're in a holding pattern. All the support letters have been, I believe, provided, and we're awaiting word as to the outcome. If Deputy City Manager Shane Dilly is online and available, perhaps he can provide a little more detail as to the timeline. I, my brief understanding is that we should hear something. I thought it was going to be in November, but I stand to be corrected on that. Shane Dilly, are you with us?
I am. Thank you, City Manager Clifton, and you are correct about the, the loose timeline there. More details to come, but we are in a holding pattern, and we'll expect to have some news mid to late fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager and Deputy City Manager. Perhaps for the benefit of the entire council and everyone listening, is, could you speak more about the, the project, the Downtown Mile, for which the 3.5 million grant money, if we obtain it successfully, will be expanded on?
Again, thank you, Councilmember, for the question. I think we also have online, because I just saw her post something in the chat, from our city engineer and capital improvements team, Christine Cameron, who, that was a team effort going into that project, of course. Christine, could we put you on the spot here to help provide some detail as to where that money would go?
Yes, thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Council, Christine Cameron with Capital Improvements. So the Downtown Mile and the RACE grant was developed in order to help fund the BNSF mitigation measures that are required for the Rio de Flagstaff project, the Florence to Walnut pedestrian underpass, the Lone Tree Overpass, and the pedestrian tunnel that's associated with the Rio. And so we do have an amount of funding with each of those projects that comes, you know, to the full package, but we do not have the money to, to fund the mitigation. And so that RACE grant was, was pursued to bring all these projects together and look at planning and phasing for these projects. It also includes a siding track, which would require reconstruction of the Milton Bridge over ADOT. And so again, it's, it's looking at US DOT funding to, to help us, you know, fund our local projects, help fund the BNSF mitigation, and to bring all, all those things together for delivery for the community.
Thank you so much, Team Flagstaff. You're just ready to answer any questions. I would, I would recommend, I think we have, we have our regular Rio de Flag update. If we could also plug that in in terms of updates and in terms of what council and Metro Plan can do to move that forward.
Indeed, you can plan on that happening. I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I see that Shane Dilly had a follow-up comment. I don't know if this pertains to the previous comment or an additional at comment to be made. Mr. Dilly?
Thank you, Manager Clifton, and members of the council. I just wanted to emphasize the intent of the RACE grant is to be a precursor to construction. So the effort really is to secure the necessary planning documents so that we have a good idea as to what will be required for construction, and we know that that effort is, is paramount to our success as an applicant for other federal grants like the Build Grant, there's others. But this planning effort really is a precursor to seeing that we're as successful in competing against those other grants for construction down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dilly, and thank you, Christine Cameron, for helping us out here. Does that help? Councilmember Solis?
Very much indeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Councilmember Shemani?
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, great report. I loved all the attachments. I thought they were very quality and informative and quite a lot of information. I do have a couple of comments and questions for our capital improvement update, if Rick Barrett is on the line. Rick, assuming you are, regarding the Beulah Roundabout, there was no mention of speed lowering. Is that something we're exploring still?
Councilmember, first of all, Mayor, good evening. This is Rick Barrett, city engineer. The speed limit, we believe, is appropriately established through the design that's occurred to date.
Okay. I thought we had council majority expressing interest in lowering that. Is that a policy decision, or is that your decision?
That decision rests with the traffic engineer by code.
Okay, I, City Manager, have concerns about that, but we can talk about that more later. Rick, thank you for that. My next question for you is, there was no comment about the tunnel accessibility from both sides of university. Is that something that's still being explored, or do you have any updates on that?
Well, yeah, we have an update scheduled for council, and you're preempting some of that. We do not believe it's feasible to connect the tunnel that's on the north side of university to the corners that are on the south side of university.
Okay. And then the number of lanes wasn't addressed either. Are we looking, exploring into lessening the, the six-lane intersection, or what are your thoughts on that?
No, that project is dictated by a traffic impact analysis. The lanes are dictated by the traffic impact analysis, so the number of lanes is not possible to change at this point in time.
All right. And then in regards to the bike lanes, very excited to see that. Any updates on the Beaver Street being done before the winter?
Yeah, we believe that both Phase 1 and Phase 2, which is Butler Phase 1, Beaver Phase 2, we believe that we can get both completed before, you said winter, but our biggest criteria right now is being able to put down the stripes in accordance with the specification, which is a 50-degree requirement, but we believe we can get both completed this calendar year.
Excellent. Thank you for that. And then just a quick comment on the Coconino Estates. I love that we're using this prototype to, this prototype banner that included a QR code to communicate to the public more information about the project, leading the public to a, a public project website. And I just encourage you and, and our team as much as we can to do more of that. I think that the community appreciates that. Next question for you, Rick, is in regards to Beal Road. When we, when we do these improvements, are we typically widening roads?
You're speaking to Beal Coconino Estates 1? No, our intent is to not widen that road. As you might recall, that that was a road funded by Road Repair and Street Safety. The intent of that program as approved by voters was to replace aging infrastructure, that being water and sewer lines simultaneously with replacing roads that have degraded. So again, that program is doing everything at once. The intent is to basically put the roadway back exactly the way it was before we rebuild the road and the associated utilities. You might remember that in case of Coconino Estates 1, we were also challenged or asked to combine sidewalks into the project. So we actually did widen the road profile, if you will, as it pertains to, you know, impact to the adjoining properties. You know, I think a property owner would have thought that the road got wider because we built the sidewalk in their front yard, but in essence, we made the roadway slightly narrower so that we could put five-foot sidewalk on both sides of the road. Maybe a little too much detail for you, but there's a lot going on when we start talking about roadway cross-sections.
I appreciate that. And then just a couple of quick comments. I appreciated that the Lone Tree discussion in terms of the overpass was brought before the sustainability, brought... brought to the Sustainability Commission, along with the Bicycle Advisory Committee and the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, along with the Transportation Commission. I, I love that kind of engagement of our commissions and committees, so thank you for that. And I look forward to conversations about that bridge and how many lanes are on that bridge, but we'll talk about that later. And then, thank you, Rick. Those are my only, my comments to you. And then, in regards to the sustainability update that we were given, it seems like greenhouse gas inventory and emissions are on the incline, and transportation emissions are up 10% from last year. And so, this is a concern of mine, council. And so, I don't know what we can do, but I like to think that maybe our climate plans can better overlay with our engineering plans to help encourage and create the kind of community emission rates that we'd like to see. And I wonder what more we can do to better collaborate between sustainability and, and that effort that we so passionately care about and our capital improvements. Because as we're talking about, we're talking about, you know, traffic studies that require us to build six lanes, when we know that pedestrians very much struggle crossing six lanes. So, we'll talk about that more later. But I appreciate the, the update, City Manager, and, and yeah, we have, we have work to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon. And I'm also in agreement with many of your comments there. Is this going to be a part of our retreat at the end of September? Will this be a part of?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In part, it will. I do not believe that we will be getting into details on things like street profiles and, and such, but I do believe we will be getting in-depth on the pilot projects that Mr. Barrett described and that Councilmember Shimon inquired about, as well as expected follow-up to those projects. What does the wintertime maintenance look like? What do future resource allocations look like? You know, it will be a bit early in the game to get, gauge the success of those projects. We will not have the benefit of hindsight because they are underway, but I think we can make it a well-informed discussion for council.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else on the City Manager Report before moving on? All right, that brings us to Agenda Item 9A, which is COVID-19 update. Oh, my apologies. We're at actually number eight, which is our council liaison report. So, I'll go down with the
That was my comment.
Thank you. Yep. I'll just go right around here. We'll start Councilmember Shimon, Liaison Report.
I don't think I have anything. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Councilmember Aslan?
Same here. I don't have anything at this time.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
And nothing for me. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, I do have a few things. I attended the Bicycle Committee. We talked about possible road markings for downtown to protect bicyclists a little better because of the concern that the cars and the bicycles are kind of in conflict, like on San Francisco and Beaver, et cetera. And we did talk about the Beaver and Butler Protected Bike Lanes that Mr. Shimon just talked about briefly. I attended the Metro Plan Meeting. I had a meeting with our, our, just our Washington lobbyists. I had a meeting on early childhood development, had a meeting on the new hospital proposal, and I attended the planning and zoning meeting, at least the part of it that had to do with Presidio and the Pines and that CUP, which I believe will come up later tonight, if I remember correctly. So, I've been busy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Metropolitan Greater Flagstaff Executive Board Meeting last week, along with Councilmember Aslan and Councilmember McCarthy, and he's the chair. In that discussion, we approve the 2.4 million requests as part of the 50 million requests that being put forth by the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council, for which I'm lobbying for in the next couple of days. Thank you. And that 2.4 million will be obligated, dedicated to Lone Tree overpass. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, now we're at Agenda Item 9, COVID-19 Update.
Thank you, Mayor Deezee and City Council. Bringing up the presentation now for you. This evening's update will be for informational purposes. We're going to share the data from Coconino County Health and Human Services, Northern Arizona Healthcare, the Navajo Nation, and the Hopi Tribe. Rose Tohe will also have the Indigenous nations update for us this evening. This is our second week of a downward trend, looking at our number of weekly cases. This week, we moved from 310 cases the previous week of August 21st to 268 cases the week ending August 28th. This trend is also true for the Flagstaff area as well. You'll see we are the top blue line, and we have experienced two weeks of downward trends, even though we are still the highest for experiencing new COVID cases. Looking at the COVID-related hospitalizations, this is our first week of a downward trend, moving from 17 cases this week compared to 29 the week prior. The beds available to treat COVID patients have remained static in the ICU. We've seen a decrease in the emergency department from 64% to the 0% you see reflected on the screen, and increased in our medical and surgical beds available from 8% to 18%. Again, beds available takes into consideration the staffing that is available at our Flagstaff Medical Center. So, we're looking at the middle column of these three hospital locations. Looking at COVID-related deaths, we've also seen a decrease over the past two weeks, with zero deaths reported the week prior and one for this most recent, recent weekly report. Our community transmission level remains high for Coconino County. We did see a decrease in our case incident rate from 217.7 per 100,000 residents to 189.4 that you see before you on this screen, and a percent positivity decrease from 7.4% last week to the 5.8%. However, our COVID-like illnesses did increase slightly from 4.5% to 5%. The number of Coconino County residents vaccinated continues to grow. This most recent report shows 57.1%. The most recent variant samples do include samples from August. The Delta variant increased from 160 during last week's report to 263, and the Gamma from 21 last week to 23 this week. 89% of these variants are amongst Flagstaff residents, and there are 502 vaccine breakthrough cases, which is 2.5% of all COVID cases. Our hospital census for Northern Arizona Healthcare reports we have 25 positive cases at Flagstaff Medical Center, and this data is as September 3rd. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Rose Tohe, our coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives. Rose?
Good afternoon, or evening again, I'm sorry, with Mayor and Council, and Shannon, thank you. So, as far as the comparison between, between the last 34 days, you'll see that Navajo Nation has really ramped up in testing, where it totaled 20, over 26,000 in 34 days. Whereas, prior to that, the, the prior 29 days, they've only had 8,957 in total tested. Negative cases are at 22,659 for that 34 days, which we, that time period. In the prior days, it was only 8,057. And then, the confirmed cases are up this, this last 20, this last 34 days at 1,299, where they were 347 in the prior time, the prior reporting. And then, the recoveries, of course, are at 1,052, and the prior date was 252. The deaths were at 30 this time period, and then 20 at the last time period. So, the deaths were still minimal compared to probably this time last year. Next. As far as the Hopi Tribe is concerned, excuse me, the total tested this time around has been at 525 in the 37 days. And then, in prior 32 days, prior reporting was at 548. So, their testing is pretty much the same as the last timeframe. And then, negative testing at 492, and then 503 the last time. Positive tests at 37, and last time period it was 30. And then, tribal members, Hopi tribal members, this time was 36, as well as last reporting time was 34. Just to compare the two reporting times. Next, Shannon. Navajo Nation reporting the, again, reemphasis of the safer-at-home public health order, and that is, is really order regarding the gathering limits, and it, they said it's to be extended or changed in the future order. Again, wearing masks in public continues to be mandatory despite the differences between the CDC guidelines. And Navajo Nation has documented cases of COVID-19 Alpha and Gamma, and the Epsilon, and the Deltas within Navajo Nation within this reporting period. So, the safest place continues to be at home. And the, the mandated, the order, the change, order in the orange status is still, it changed from apparently in the last, since the last reporting period, there was a period of yellow status for, for the orange status in business. Now, they've changed it back to the orange. And then, that is the order that pertains to businesses that are operating on Navajo Nation. And that continues to be at 50% maximum occupancy. And then, the schools are also operating at orange status, and this is for, effective for all student schools as of August 16th. And this is binding for all schools, including Head Start across the Navajo Nation, and they are also to comply with Navajo Nation COVID-19 Safe Schools Framework, which has been included in your report. And again, all mask-wearing is, is required for all schools in, for students that are age two and older, or for school settings. Next. The Hopi Tribe, again, continues and encourages vaccines for ages 12 and older, and it also, again, also recommends face masking inside all their public buildings in common areas. And these are, according to the Mr. Royce Jenkins, Director of Public Health Authority, they see a rise in COVID-19 cases and have confirmed the Delta and Alpha variants cases on their nation. And they are still encouraging all unvaccinated individuals to, to get vaccinated, especially those that are age 12 and over. According to them, there are 3/4ths of Hopi communities that are vaccinated, but worried about the 25% that are unvaccinated. The, the, they recommend that this remains the same as far as the executive order they have on the re-phase ongoing for their third, third, Part Three, I'm sorry. And they are really asking businesses to remain diligent in making sure that all the protocols are remaining in place for all business and work settings where this, their executive order applies. And then, their Hopi Emergency Relief Fund is also giving out every week, or distributions twice every week through the end of September in distributing their personal protective equipment in form of having packages available for their community members. And that's all I have. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, Rose, for the Indigenous nations update. Council, that's all the information that we have to present to you this evening, but we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager, and Ms. Tohe. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick question. The percentage of vaccinated, is that fully vaccinated? So, both doses?
That is my understanding.
All right. Anyone else? Councilmember Shimon?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the updates. Just a couple of quick comments. I was in Colorado this past weekend, and they are on top of it. They've got great signage going into towns about mask requirements, and, and every, every shop had really nice signage requiring mask-wearing. Now, I understand that the governor of our state has preempted us in our ability to do so, but I do wonder what else we can do as a city as folks come up from Phoenix, where at times the virus doesn't seem to exist in people's minds, and, and encourage them to wear masks, along with empowering our local businesses. So, I don't necessarily care to dive into a big conversation about this tonight, but I do want to, just want to throw out there that, you know, I wonder what else we can do other than just, you know, maybe like an ADOT sign saying, hey, wear a mask, save lives. But, you know, as a city of Flagstaff, as you enter our town, wear a mask. I don't know. You know, I, I've seen a lot of local businesses have their signage up saying masks are required, but when you go in, it's, it's a total, you know, miss whatever. It's a hodgepodge situation. Anyways, it was really encouraging seeing what Colorado was able to pull off with their community, and I just wonder if we can do more, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I do think we have Director Hanson wanted to comment on that front.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Heidi Hansen, Economic Vitalia Director. I just wanted to let you know that we had switched from the stay-play-distance-and-mask-responsible, responsibly message to stay and play responsibly. And I can quite easily ask the staff to go back to the stay-play-distance-and-mask-responsibly on all of our outward-facing and inward-facing advertising. That is an easy fix. It was very helpful, actually, for the last year and a half. And if you'd like us to do that, we can take care of that immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Hanson. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Heidi. I, I would be interested in that, but I'm only one. Thank you.
I would also be interested in that. I got a thumbs up from Vice Mayor and quite a few others. So, that would be great. The other thing I would mention, too, is that we have a lot of banners that we hang from city poles downtown. If we could put up some banners that just say, wear the face mask, or something like that. Doesn't say, you know, required. It doesn't say suggested. Just say, wear the mask. It might help with people being reminded as they get out of their vehicle. Because I see that a lot of, when, is folks get out of their car, they go to the store, they're like, oh, shoot, I forgot my mask, and then walk a few block, blocks back, or back or decide, "Oh, oh, the heck with it, I'm just going to go into the retail shop." So it might be a good reminder as people are visiting downtown Flagstaff, just a, just a thought. If others might be interested in seeing if we could. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. Are we still doing the banners downtown? And Heidi, this might be for you.
Um, actually, Mayor and, uh, Councilmember Sweet, Rebecca Sayers has a comment because she handles that program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Rebecca Sayers, Parks Recreation and Open Space Director. So we actually discontinued the downtown banner program a couple of years ago due to budget constraints. And also it allowed for a lot of the flower projects to be installed without, uh, interrupting, being interrupted with banners. So we do not have the downtown program. We do have community banner locations, uh, that are managed through the Community Development Department.
Thank you.
Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe there's a, a downtown banner project or program that are displayed on the lamppost. And if I'm not mistaken, I think it is managed by the Downtown Business Alliance.
Okay. Could we, could we get confirmation on that? Well, is it DBA that, um, does the lamp poles for that? Okay. That might be an area we might be able to partner on, um, because I just think those, if we can just have those reminders, I think it will help people mask who just forget it in their cars and such. So, all right. And anything else, Council? All right. Thank you, Deputy City Manager and everyone else. Yes.
So sorry, really quick. I, I had the idea, City Manager, I don't know if this is possible or if there's support for this idea, but I have seen other council bodies having those little dividers, little plastic clear dividers between each of, each of the members. And personally, I, I would be of, of support of that for us. I'm not sure if, how easy that would be to make happen or if there's support for that, but, um, I don't know what you all think, but I think that that makes sense as we're continuing to ride this COVID train.
I mean, I think, I think that's reasonable, but we're already also here, and I think we're doing pretty good at distance and enough.
I think we're all vaccinated, right? We're also all wearing masks, I think.
Yeah.
Personally, that's plenty of... You are vaccinated, right?
HIPAA. Excellent. Well, we got some cool Can 95s out there, too, so extra protection there, too. All right. Uh, anything else? That brings us to our agenda item ten, our appointments. Ten A is the consideration of appointments for the Library Board. Staff recommended action is to make two appointments in terms expiring November 2023. If I recall, we have Councilmember Aslan and McCarthy in charge of this one, starting with Councilmember Aslan.
Yeah, let me pull this up here real fast. It's always a privilege and an honor to be able to nominate, um, citizens who have stepped forward, uh, with an application, uh, for these boards. Um, and I'm really excited, if I may, to nominate Carmelita Chief, uh, to the Library Board, um, for a term expiring in November 2023.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember, uh, Aslan, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you all.
Twice over. Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy. Oh, any, any opposed? That motion carries. Councilmember McCarthy.
I think, as Mr. Aslan is well aware, uh, we had a lot of really qualified candidates, so it is difficult to choose. But I would like to nominate, uh, Meredith Heller for a term, uh, expiring, uh, November 2023.
Do I have a second?
Certainly.
All right. Seconded by...
And that, of course, was to the Library Board.
Yes. All the, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries. That brings us to gen, appointments, Agenda Item Ten B, consideration of appointments for the Housing Commission. Staff recommended action is to make one appointment to a community representative seat for a term expiring in September 2023. Make one appointment to a building and real estate professional lender seat to a term expiring in September 2024. And make one appointment to a low-income housing expert seat to a term expiring in September 2024. And I do believe we have, is it Councilmember Solis trying to pull it up here, that is first on the list?
Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. We do have a public comment for this item, if you would like to take that now.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Good timing.
Mr. Denham, you can go ahead and give your comments now.
Hey, thank you. Hello, Councilmembers, this is Tyler Denham. I'm calling today to make the case for my application to the Housing Commission as a community representative. By joining, I hope to continue the analysis support I've provided at this point, over three hundred hours, to the commission's zoning and land use and gap analysis subgroups. Through those months of support, I've become excessively familiar with many of the data sources relevant to Flagstaff housing, where to find them, how to pull them, limitations and uses. And I think that familiarity plus my analytics skillset serve the commission well, as it provides data, insights, and polished recommendations on how to address Flagstaff's housing. Also, I want to address a potential concern head-on. All of you know me, know that I'm, uh, I guess the polite word is passionate about housing issues and do a lot of advocacy. I've read emails, spoken to council, put an end to the easy picky son, question exception to density limits on my property, organized on social media in support of multifamily developments, so on and so forth. I understand, though, that the commission seat is not merely a platform for my own advocacy, and that I would need to always distinguish my advocacy as a private citizen from my position as a commission. This divide is already quite familiar to me in my professional life, so I don't foresee an issue checked to as a commission. And, uh, that's all. Thank you for your ear, Councilmembers.
Thank you, Mr. Denham. Any other public participants or just, just the one?
Just the one. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to dedicate a time and space to, um, appreciate and articulate my gratitude to every commission members we have and every active commission that we have for dedicating their time and talent and expertise in serving our, uh, our community by being on the commission. I also, uh, uh, send gratitude to, uh, uh, all the applicants who have turned in their, their, uh, who have signified their interest, uh, in serving our, our community by offering their, their services, volunteer services, uh, to serve on the many commissions that we have. Also, making sure that, you know, um, our diverse community is well represented in these commissions. On that note, uh, I would like to nominate Tyler Denham, um, as a community representative seat for a term expiring in September 2023.
I'll second that.
I would like to move that we go into executive session.
I second that motion. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Muting, moving to executive session.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. See upstairs. Oh, the crew is back. All right. We are currently still on the, uh, appointments, Ten B, consideration appointment for a Housing Commission, and I do believe we do have a motion on the table. Councilmember Shimoney, did you second that motion?
I did. And I have a comment.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, thank you, Councilmember Solis, for nominating Tyler Denham. I just wanted to share a personal account with Tyler. I, I know him pretty well, and I've had numerous conversations about housing with him. And yes, he is passionate, and he is fiery, and he really cares about housing for our most vulnerable and for the folks that often don't have a voice here at the city chambers. And I personally have really appreciated his advocacy and his, uh, strength in his words and his, um, energy and, and dedication to the city's housing plans and efforts. I want to remind the Council that, uh, Joanna Wheaton was on this commission and has passed away, and she, too, was a very fiery, passionate person. And, um, a lot of folks on our commissions, I have a lot of passion. And personally, I think Tyler makes a really good appoint, appointee or appointment for this community position. But obviously, we work as a council majority, and I respect others' opinions. But I just wanted to weigh my own support behind Tyler as a, as a, as a potential member of this commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. That was well said. I have had the opportunity to work with Tyler, um, on the tenure housing plan, and the work that he has brought to the plan has been invaluable. The, the, all of the subcommittees on the plan work really well together. And I guess what I would just say to Tyler, um, you know, based on also his public comments this evening, um, just to keep that in mind, to, to be a good listener, to, um, be thoughtful in your decision-making, and if a decision doesn't go your way, um, you know, live to, to bring it up again or, or bring it up in a different way.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I do have some concerns, and I know that people can, uh, grow and change, uh, but I, I do find, uh, just the fact that our Vice Mayor, um, had to give this applicant some advice, um, during this process, uh, only serves to reinforce the concerns that I have. Uh, I've, I've personally received fiery emails from this candidate, and I have concerns, uh, based off of the conversations that we're just coming off of in terms of decorum and consensus-building around moving this nomination forward at this time. I think it's best to leave it there, but I will not be voting to move this forward.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Any further discussion? We do have a motion on the table, seconded by Councilmember Shimoney. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. That motion carries.
All right, so four to three.
Yes. It's a four-three vote.
Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, we need to have, I was just going to say, I think Stacy's going to ask you for clarification on who the nay votes were.
Yes, thank you, Sterling, if we could clarify that.
Myself, Councilmember McCarthy, and Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the second appointment. Who is in charge of that? Councilmember Aslan.
All right. I would like to nominate Karen Flores. It might take me a minute to get the details here. I think, uh, it would be appropriate to reappoint her, uh, to a new term expiring in September 2024, as she is currently a, a, a sitting member on the board.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember McCarthy. Uh, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, um, uh, Councilmember Aslan's, uh, motion is to reappoint, um, Karen Flores as a building and real estate professional in, in the house, uh, and lender in the, in the Housing Commission.
Correct.
That is correct. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Councilmember McCarthy is next.
Well, thank you, Mayor. The person I'm going to nominate, I know personally. And when I was the council liaison to this commission, I worked with her closely, and it was with great enthusiasm that I nominate Divana McLaughlin to be the low-income housing expert on the Housing Commission, and that will be for a term expiring in September of 2024.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. All right. Moving right along here. We'll take a break shortly after the public hearings, and I think we just have one consent item. Oh, wait, no, we don't. We have a lot more. I'll just do it after the, our public hearing, which we're down to Agenda Item Eleven, Liquor License Public Hearings, Consideration and Action on Liquor License Application, Jared Michael Rapinski, Lumberjack Pizza, 104 East Route 66, Series Seven, it's a beer and wine bar, owner transfer. Individual from the, uh, police to give any presentation regarding this applicant?
Thank you, Council Mayor Ryan Charlie from the Flagstaff Police Department. I'm here to answer any of your questions regarding the two liquor license applications before you, and I found no derogatory records or applicant, uh, for the, any of the applicants or the businesses.
Excellent. Thank you. With that's the case, then I'd like to do both of these liquor license applications at the same time. Uh, we do have the applicants, if they would like to speak, uh, you are more than welcome to do so now, or we can move forward. Ms. Salzberg?
I don't see a request for either of them to speak, but they are available for questions.
Okay, great. Well, then, um, I am closing this public hearing and motioning to, um, accept both liquor licenses, or to, sorry, to, um, forward the application of the state with the recommendation for approval. I have a second?
I'll second.
I'm seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. With that, it is four fifty-two right now. Think it'd be a good time for a little break for everyone. Let's say, be back here at five-ten PM. That'll give eighteen minutes. Sound good? Get you some food? All right. All right. Thank you. All right. Are you all set back there? Stacy?
We are, Mayor. We can go ahead and get started when you're ready.
All right. Do we have, do we have Councilmember McCarthy and I shot back there? No? All right. Well, one more minute. Thanks. Okay. Well, I'll just, uh, start up here. We are down to Agenda Item Number Twelve, our consent items. Council, would you like to pull out any specific ones of these consent items? No, you're good, Councilmember McCarthy? All right. Well, with that, I will, yeah?
I did have a question regarding, I believe it's, uh, Twelve D. So maybe we can pull that one out. It's a final plat approval for Ponderosa Parkway.
Yeah. Your question on that?
You want me to go ahead now?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great. I'm trying to remember who the developer was and if they are by chance available, or if there's someone from staff that would be able to speak to this. I'm trying to remember who the developer was and if they are by chance available, or if there's someone from staff that would be able to speak to this.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Shimonie, that was 12B.
Diaz and David.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I'm, again, I am sorry to interrupt, and sorry, Tiffany. Could we go ahead and move to approve the other consent items and then take this one separately?
Okay, yeah, let's, I motioned to approve all but Consent Item 12D. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I think Councilmember McCarthy beat you to the punch there. We have motion by, seconded motion by Councilmember McCarthy. All the, any further discussion? All who approve?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying just to recall, I believe it was this project that, Tiffany, am I correct that was this the project that talked to, I believe, 10 bicycle parking spots?
No, I don't actually remember. The rezoning on this case was two years ago. I don't remember. Patrick St. Clair might be available. I think this project's been passed between four different planners at this point, so my apologies. This is for the condominium plat, though, for the Phase 3 of this development. So all this is doing, so that all of the buildings and site plans have already been approved, the rezoning has been approved. This is just for the condominium plat for Phase 3.
You know, I think, Mayor, I think I'm getting confused with the different agenda items, so I am happy to see this through, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve 12D.
The motion by Councilmember Shimonie?
I'll second.
I have it seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. We are to Agenda Item 13A. This is our routine items. Consideration and adoption of Ordinance Number 2021-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the City Code pertaining to the establishment of fees for fire department services outside the city limits. Staff recommended action is to read Ordinance Number 2021-19 by title only for the final time. Would you like to motion?
Mayor, I move that we read Ordinance 2021-19 by title only for the final time.
I second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Agenda Item 13, oh, yep.
Now, we need to read it.
It's different when I'm back here. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending Section 5-01-001-0001 of the Flagstaff City Code regarding fire protection services in county islands and other selected unincorporated property, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 2021-19.
I'll second that.
It's seconded by Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Agenda Item 13B is the consideration and adoption of Ordinance Number 2021-20, an ordinance amending Flagstaff City Code, Chapter 1 through 18 Administrative Departments to establish the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Division in City Code. Staff recommended action is to read Ordinance Number 2021-20 by title only for the final time. I move to read Ordinance Number 2021-20 by title only for the final time. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
That's seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Oh, Vice Mayor. Okay, well, we can, we can have a discussion on the item if you'd like before we, yeah.
I would just like to say that as housing has risen in our consciousness and we've declared, council has declared a housing emergency, that I would ask the city manager to consider how we could also raise housing up so that they have a seat at the leadership table.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Daggett. Councilmember Salas?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. I believe that the new division, as discussed in the previous meeting where we had this discussion, is to establish the Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Events Division. PROS is the acronym.
All right, excellent. Yes, thank you for pointing that out, Councilmember Salas. Oh, we do have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code, Chapter 1-18 Administrative Departments, to establish the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Division, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
I move to adopt Ordinance Number 21-2021-20.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, Councilmember Salas, for the additional word. Although that wasn't in the reading, that's a clerical correction that can be added. Didn't have to be through a formal amendment to the motion or anything. Thank you.
All right, thank you much. That motion carries. We are down to Agenda Item 13C. This is the consideration and approval of contract Lone Tree Overpass Project, award of First Amendment to the Design-Build Services Agreement to Ames Construction. Staff recommended action is to award the First Amendment to the Design-Build Services Agreement to Ames Construction of Phoenix, Arizona, in an amount not to exceed $893,268.46, and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Christine Cameron, project manager with Capital Improvements. So this item is for consideration of Amendment Number 1 to our original design-build contract to Ames Construction. Since the original contract was awarded in February, we have been working on preliminary design. Agency coordination would be NSF, the Army Corps, and ADOT, and property acquisitions. Now that we have our basic design and footprint, it's coming together. We do need to get out and do our geotechnical investigation, some survey work, and potholing to continue the, excuse me, to continue the design for the bridge, the roadway, and the utilities. We have been working on property acquisitions, and the relocation scope is also included in this amendment. Our project delivery method we're using is progressive design-build. So this allows us to build upon the original scope with amendments and advance the project as design and construction proceeds, as agency coordination happens, and as public input is received. It allows for us to be flexible and end up with a project that delivers on our bond commitment and a project that works for the community. So this amendment will keep us moving along in that direction. A few upcoming items I did want to mention tonight. On September 21st, we will be bringing a full project presentation to council at our regular council meeting. This will provide an overview of the project, our traffic intersections, including bike and pet facilities and project aesthetics. And on September 30th, we have a virtual public meeting scheduled. Invitations for that will be going out this week. And with that, I will answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, council? Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Christina. I was going to ask about project aesthetics. You just mentioned it briefly. This is something that I'm very interested in and representing an interested community on. I don't know if that conversation should be saved for the date that you just mentioned, or if you could speak to it at all right now. How is the Ames Construction thinking about the aesthetics and the potential landmark amenity that this feature might bring to our community?
Mayor, Councilmember Aslan, yeah, that will be part of the presentation on the 21st with some graphics. You know, we have the preliminary concept of the bridge. Of course, we had to make sure that the design worked with the spans of, you know, going over the Rio de Flag and going over the BNSF rail corridor. So those are some things that can find, you know, the type of bridge we're able to really present in an economical manner for the project budget. But there's a lot of ideas about landscaping around the bridge, gateway, you know, items that can be put on either side at Route 66 or at Butler Avenue. A lot of surface aesthetics that can be put onto the concrete. I think they have some pictures of maybe wrought iron type of railings that are artistic. So we'll see a lot of those ideas on the 21st for discussion.
Okay, thank you very much. I will wait until then, but I encourage everyone to think as big as possible within our budget and obviously within the framework of our other priorities, which are engineering and safety, but also bike and pet access.
Agreed.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do we have any other questions at this time? Yeah, go ahead.
I move to approve Item 13C, using Charlie.
I second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Down to Agenda Item 13D, consideration and approval of preliminary plat. Case number PZ-17-00175-04, Meramonte Birch and Verde LLC requests preliminary plat approval for Meramonte at Birch Avenue. Subdivision consists of 24 residential condominium units located at 304 to 316 East Birch Avenue. The condominium plat is on 0.53 acres in the T4N1 transect zone. Staff recommended action, staff recommends the city council, in accordance with the findings presented in the report and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of approval, 5 to 0 unanimously, approve the preliminary plat. Ms. Anton?
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for your time tonight. I am here to present on the Meramonte at Birch condominiums, this is a preliminary plat approval request. So the request for Meramonte Birch and Verde for this preliminary plat is for condominiums located between the addresses of 304 and 316 East Birch Avenue. This is a condominium subdivision that consists of 24 dwelling units on .53 acres, utilizing the T4N1, T4 neighborhood zone. IDS staff approved the preliminary plat on June 30, or July 30. This is a condominium plat, which takes a multi-unit complex and creates the potential for individually-owned units. It's important to note that the condominium plat does not approve this development or deny this development. The development has already been approved, utilizing its existing zoning entitlements. It has a site plan. It is in for a building permit review concurrently. The condominium plat only takes that building and breaks it into individual airspace units that could be sold at a later date. This is the vicinity map. The subject site is outlined in red. You'll see that this is the conventional or Euclidean zoning map. It's not showing you the T4N1 open, but it is showing you under the Euclidean zone. It's in the CB or Central Business District Zone, which it's primarily surrounded by either that or is surrounded by high-density residential. Here, we are showing you the first floor of the plat, of the condominium plat. This is the general outline of the building on the site. The plat itself consists of about 14 different pages, so I won't show them all to you because it's relatively boring. But you can see here the interesting note, and one of the things is that I call out that this building is three stories. And you'll see that the plat is calling out four stories, and the reason is because the building is split level. So while one end of the building is three stories, the other end of the building is also three stories, but one floor intersects with the second floor of the next building. So it, overall, the plat reads as if it's a four-story building. However, it is not. It is a three-story building. And I will show you on a follow-up elevation. So like stated before, this is the T4 neighborhood zone. In the Form-based code, it's different from the Euclidean zoning. In this case, you pick a building type and a private frontage type. In this case, they're using the apartment building type, which allows up to 32 units within the building. They are, there are 24. They're also using the private frontage type, which is called a forecourt. And if you have questions on either of those, I can answer them for you. But the building itself is designed in compliance with the zoning code, which is one of the primary findings for a plat. And also, T4N1 has very set-specific setbacks, of which the building is complying with those setbacks. The maximum height of the building is 45 feet. Had they used the Euclidean zoning of CB, they would have had a maximum height of 60 feet. The maximum lot coverage is 60%, and the actual lot coverage here will be 54.3%. So this is the site plan. It's a much smaller version of what I showed you before. This shows another outline of the building. There is an interior parking garage to the building, and here are those elevations. As you can see, the building is split level. There is a 20% grade change across the site. So in accordance with our zoning code, the building is working with that topography on-site and is stepping the building along the height of the build, along the slope of the street, rather than masquerading the site. Here's the other elevation, as you can see it. So the building is not over three stories in height. The second finding is that all of the engineering standards are met. In this case, with 24 units, a traffic impact analysis was not required, and the existing water and sewer facilities or infrastructure is sufficient to serve this property. Stormwater is served through underground detention and LED storage. The third finding is compliance with subdivision standards. Those include what the preliminary plat procedures and application requirements are, what needs to show on the plat, as, what all of the different elements that are required to show. Condominium plats are also required to show the airspace containment, the common limited, of their common open space elements. And any minimum required subdivision improvements, which are all primarily addressed in those engineering standards. Condominium plats are sort of unique. We're not subdividing land and creating new roads and infrastructure. All of that was handled through that site planning and civil plans for the actual building itself. So in accordance with these findings, the city council shall find that it meets all provisions of the zoning code, the engineering design standards, and the General Plans and Subdivisions Code. The Planning and Zoning Commission, based on the required findings, did forward this preliminary plat to the city council with a recommendation for approval. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Anton. Council, do we have any questions at this time? Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tiffany. This is the project I was getting confused for. I saw that this one had plans for 10 bicycle parking spots, and I saw that it was an increase from two that was being required. I was wondering if those parking spots were covered or if those were just exposed to the elements?
You know, I didn't review, so this is an inherited project, and I didn't review the bike parking as part of this, and I don't remember there being 10 as part of the approval.
It was part of the PNC Commission staff summary in our agendas.
There are eight bicycle parking spaces provided. They're minimum of two, and they do not indicate that they are covered.
So I guess my question to the developer would be, is it possible to cover them?
So you want to ask the developer?
Yes, Councilmember Shimonie, to answer your question, there are 10 bike racks, and they are all located within the interior parking garages.
That's great. And by 10 bike racks, you mean 10 spots for 10 different bicycles?
That's correct. Sorry, sorry for the confusion. That is correct.
Okay, no worries. That's great. Let me see if I have any other questions. In regards to EV parking, are you all planning to provide that?
Yes, we are providing EV parking per the code, which requires a NEMA 1450 outlet and a minimum number. I believe we have two spaces on here. This is going to be future-proofed to where on the interior parking garage, it could be surface-mounted, conduit can be surface-mounted to almost all the spaces, if not all the spaces, as. As a developer for the future, and especially in Flagstaff, we totally realize and acknowledge that the future is electric cars and that there needs to be flexibility for those, all those spaces to, on the electrical panels as well as in the garage, to be flexible and that they can all support future EV cars.
That's great. And as a developer, would it make more sense to proactively install more EV up front?
Absolutely. The hurdle is just the cost of those charging systems, especially the commercial ones. So we're trying to partner with local and national providers of those spaces and seek out grants for those as well, because they become very, very expensive. In our, in our single-family homes, we pre-wire all of those, so you can just plug and play the residential Tesla charger or some of the other chargers that, you know, they literally just plug into that NEMA 1450. The biggest hurdle is on the commercial side, where you have to install those bigger charging stations.
Very good. And then my last question for you, Jack, and thank you for being available, is in regards to the building itself and its sustainability, can you speak to what sustainability practices you all are doing?
So we will provide HERS scores as we do with all of our new building permit applications. The HERS scores for these, this building, these units are favorable, I believe, I don't have them in front of me, but I believe they're in the 50s and 60s. As with new construction, we try to go above and beyond, and that's what the HERS score really calculates, in that we use blown-in, open-cell foam on the envelope walls of all of our buildings, in the roof decks, attic systems, and really try to build to a higher standard, as you see with Miramonte's product across the board in Flagstaff.
Very good. And I'm just going to really quickly circle back to the bicycle parking infrastructure. So 10, 10 units, I do like to believe that potentially, given its proximity, the proximity of your project here, I like to think that all 24 units might choose to have a bicycle, especially if it's a covered spot. Would you be able to accommodate 24 bicycles?
We are absolutely looking to, to expand on that 10, on those 10 spaces, especially in the parking garage, as well as some of these, these ground floor units are going to have private backyards where they'll be able to, you know, park their bikes there. But we are absolutely looking at alternatives that, that are, they don't necessarily meet the bike parking code, but you know, some of those wall hanger bike, you know, lockable bike racks, those aren't really covered in the bike code in the City of Flagstaff, but we would, we really want to add to the number of bike racks, lockable bike racks within that garage. And then obviously, we'll have, it'll, they'll be very well-lit in the garage as well as have surveillance for, you know, any sort of theft concern that residents might have.
That's great, and I so appreciate that. And you have my full support in increasing that number. So thank you, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, guys.
Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for submitting this, this project for council discussion and possible approval. I am just curious, why isn't there any discussion on affordable units? I know we're talking of 24 condo units, and how come there's no unit or units being offered as affordable?
Is that a question for staff or the applicant?
To the applicant, thank you.
Councilmember Salas, unfortunately, with this project, the cost of the, of construction with building these condominiums, specific condominiums, the price of the land, and the infrastructure improvements that we need to do, we identify, you know, a lot of projects in town that we're really looking at for, you know, Ponderosa Parkway, for instance, Track M, which is going before you guys later today in this meeting. Certain projects are primed for offering affordable housing units. And this, unfortunately, just with the, the current and previous financial underwriting with purchasing the project, obviously, we go and purchase the project before it's approved. Just with how this project was underwritten, it just, it was not physically possible, financially possible, or feasible to supply affordable housing units. Again, Miramonte as a company absolutely sees the need in Flagstaff in the crisis, and we want to help mitigate that crisis. Just unfortunately, this project is just, it's not possible to do that for this project.
Again, can you please identify yourself, whoever is speaking online, so I can read that.
I apologize, Councilmember. My name is Jack Kimerly with Miramonte Homes, Vice President of Land and Product Development.
Thank you, Mr. Kimerly, for joining us online at this meeting. So is it, is it accurate for me to say that, or to interpret what you just said earlier, that you're not offering any affordable unit because it's cost prohibitive?
Specifically on this project, that is correct. Again, on Ponderosa Parkway, where we're offering 16 of those attainable units, and then the remaining of those units are entry-level market rate units. Yeah, it makes, it makes financial sense there. Unfortunately, on this project, based on the cost of construction and the cost of the land when we purchased it, and what the costs have gone up to now, it's, it's financially and physically impossible for us to offer affordable housing on this project specifically. Again, we strive to identify future projects, you know, a bunch are coming your guys' way in the future. That will be, we will be able to offer those, those affordable and attainable units.
Thank you, Mr. Kimerly.
Any other questions, Council? I was happy to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the preliminary plat for approval for Miramonte at Birch Avenue condominiums, as it delivers the required findings. First, in compliance with zoning code. Second, it meets engineering standards. Third, it meets subdivision and land split regulations.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Salas, seconded by Councilmember Shimoney. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Down to agenda number 14. This is our regular agenda. 14A is the consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2021-42, a resolution approving two binding waivers of enforcement relating to assessor parcel numbers 101-35-002, 003-004, and -481A, located at the corner of Dale Avenue and LaRue Street, and located at 3100 South Solitaires Canyon Drive. Staff recommended action is to read Resolution Number 2021-42 by title only.
Thank you, Mayor. Captain Fensel, Deputy City Attorney, will be hand on this item today. We are talking about two Prop 207 claims that were received by the city and the related binding waivers of enforcement. Can you see the presentation?
Yes, we're good.
Great. So a little bit of background. In November 2020, Flagstaff City Council adopted Ordinance 2020-28, which made various amendments to this Flagstaff zoning code, including amendments that made certain changes regulating high-density housing. In addition, with those amendments, the high-density housing amendments required a conditional use permit for HOH, restricted HOH of four units or more to the pedestrian shed of an activity center, and added parking, bedroom, bathroom, and other HOH regulations. In June 2021 was when the city received the two Prop 207 claims. The first was made by DNL Property LLC, Tony and Elise Colom, and Natjo Business LLC filed their Prop 207 claim with the city regarding three parcels of land located at the corner of Dale Avenue and LaRue Street. The owners claim that as a result of the HOH amendments, the properties were devalued by a total amount of $525,000. The second claim was filed by the Nadler Trust, and it pertained to a parcel of land located at 3100 South Solitaires Canyon Drive. The owner of that property claims that it resulted, as a result of the HOH amendments, the property was devalued by $1.2 million. So to give a brief overview of Prop 207, Prop 207 is at ARS 12-1134, and it provides essentially that, or allows a property owner to seek just compensation when a city adopts a land-use law that reduces the property owner's existing rights to use, divide, sell, or possess private real property, and such action reduces the fair market value of the property. If the property owner wants to make a 207 claim, all the landowner has to do is make a written demand for a specific amount of just compensation. The city then has 90 days to pay the demand, amend the law, or permanently waive the enforcement of the new land-use law on the landowner's parcel. If the city does not take one of those actions, then the landowner can make, can file a claim for just compensation in Superior Court. Just compensation for diminution in value is a reduction in fair market value for the property resulting from the land-use law. Essentially, you look at the most likely price for the land prior to the amendment taking effect, and then you look at it the day after the land-use law takes effect, and you compare the difference. So the resolution in front of you adopts two binding waivers of enforcement. Through these binding waivers of enforcement, if they're approved by council, the city will agree and declare that the HOH zoning amendments will not be enforced nor applicable to the entirety or any portion of the properties identified in this presentation. Does Council have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Fensel. That I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to read Resolution 2021-42 by title only.
I have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. City Clerk.
The resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving two binding waivers of enforcement relating to assessor parcel numbers 101-35-002, 101-35-003, 101-35-004, and 105-10-481A, located at the corner of Dale Avenue and LaRue Street, and located at the 3100 South Solitaires Canyon Drive, both within the corporate limits of the City of Flagstaff.
Thank you, City Clerk.
I move to adopt 2021-42.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Down to agenda item 14B. This is city council review of conditional use permit. A conditional use permit request from Meramonte Presidio LLC to establish a planned residential development on Track M within the Presidio of the Pines master plan development was denied by the planning commission on August 25, 2021 by a 3-2 vote. Staff does not have a recommended action. If a majority of council chooses to review the conditional use permit, a public hearing will be noticed, and the matter will be set before council at a future date. Thank you. We do have two speaker request cards that we will take first, as we don't have a formal presentation on this. Robert Davis.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Robert Davis. I'm a resident of Presidio in the Pines, where Track M is located. What I'm asking of the council tonight is to accept the denial from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and in lieu of that, request that Miramonte come back with alternative proposals that address the residents' concerns. There were two, two public hearings, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, which was very well-attended by residents, and basically unanimously, they opposed the proposed project that Miramonte was presenting for a number of reasons. It's three stories, there isn't another three-story building in Presidio. They're all one and two of a variety of styles and such. And it's right on the corner of Presidio, and it's a very dangerous area, because there's only three entrances. And where it's being located with the proposed 39 units, it would, is one of the busiest entrances, one of, two of the three busiest. And there's safety concerns. Miramonte hasn't established a stormwater drainage plan yet with the city, and their proposal was to go across Presidio property, which the residents have opposed, because they already have drainage issues from the stormwater that's already there without this addition. So what we're asking is that you go and get alternatives from Miramonte that address the concerns. We're not opposed to residential in this area. It's that, we'd like to finish Presidio and get it done with it, but there are other alternatives rather than three-story condominiums in that area. Once that's done, a public hearing could be heard, alternatives could be brought back to the council, and it would then require another amendment to the developers' agreement, amendment number five, based upon what was acceptable to council on that, rather than the proposal that's on the table with Miramonte. So I believe that's an action which would address the concerns of the community, still provide additional residential housing in that area, and be more acceptable to what we've developed with that. But it's basically been, residents have been unanimous in their opposition to what is being proposed by Miramonte. And this, and the Planning and Zoning Commission was a, how do I want to say? Well, it was, not, I won't say in favor, but it understood the concerns of the community, and especially, you all know, if you face south, you're good on snow, and if you face north, you have ice. If this faces north, it's a very dangerous situation.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Davis? Yeah, Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for joining us this evening and sitting through this meeting to voice your thoughts here. I just had a quick question for you as a resident. You, obviously, having attended the PNC meeting and other meetings prior, understand that Tracks A and B were slated to have a lot higher density than what was brought forward in the end. Where do you recommend that density is made up?
Well, you have to look at the Presidio in a whole. The Track A, which originally was like 320 condominiums and that, there was also a, a commercial district in there. There was an amphitheater. There were those, and that developer went bankrupt. And that, so it was, there was change. So what happened back in 2004 in that original plan really doesn't carry forward to how Presidio ended up being developed. So there really isn't a makeup of this. This last corner is there, and we're all in favor of doing more of the housing that has already been put in Presidio. And we believe there's, they can be creative in their designs. There's a design in Presidio where you have four houses going on one driveway, and two of them don't even have a entrance on the street. They face into the back. So there's all kinds of arrangements that have been made in the design. So to take that nearly three acres into, they can be creative and get that in there, but not put the larger, and we know what they look like, because they're the same buildings that they're doing on Ponderosa Parkway. And I believe you just did the third phase tonight. So it's, they're just not compatible. So it's, they're just not compatible with the look and feel and the presence of that, and their location is in the corner, and Miramonte has made an argument that, well, nobody's going through the thing, but that's where we all go in and out of that, and it's dangerous. It's right after, it's right into a roundabout and all that, and cars don't come around that roundabout the slowest you have there, and instead of having a limited number, there's some houses a little further down, so that's one driveway coming out, not 39 units coming out of the same thing that's even closer to the roundabout, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Next speaker I have is Charity Lee.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Charity Lee, I'm the Land Acquisition and Development Manager for Miramonte Homes, and I'm requesting that you vote to review the conditional use permit at the next available council meeting for Presidio Track M. August 25, the Planning and Zoning Commission denied our permit without stating reasons for the denial in a vote of three to two. This was after city staff had recommended approval of the conditional use permit with conditions stating that our project meets the required findings for granting the CUP. Number one, the conditional use is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code and the purpose of the zone in which the site is located. Number two, that granting the conditional use permit will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. And number three, that the characteristics of the conditional use as proposed and as it may be conditioned are reasonably compatible with the types of uses permitted in the surrounding area. Our project is a 39-unit condominium for sale project. This will bring additional units to Flagstaff in an area and a time when housing is a crisis. And additionally, we will have four that will be attainable. So we ask for your consideration to hear our case and allow us to bring this back at the next available council meeting. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Do we have any questions, Ms. Lee, at this time? Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor. Were you by chance able to identify the numbers that Track A and B were meant to have versus what was created in the end? Are you able to share that with us?
Absolutely. So Track A was originally slated for 232 condominiums. It was going to be a five-story complex, and we downsized that to 42 townhomes. Track B was originally a live-work. It would have been 23 units. We downsized that to 14 townhomes. So overall, the entire Presidio in the Pines subdivision is about 200 units less than was originally planned for.
Thank you. And really quick, do you know if there's any update on potential increase in affordable units at this property?
The development, fourth amendment to the development agreement has been approved and by council. We intend to proceed with the original development agreement as approved at this time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Thank you.
All right, counsel. I'll open it up here for discussion. Councilmember McCarthy?
Mayor?
Yes.
I am sorry. I do have virtual public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I did. Yeah, one more public commentator online.
We actually have a few now, so I'm going to start. Mr. Tyler Denham, you can go ahead and speak now.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Just calling in to urge the council to hold a public meeting in the interest of transparency. So I listened to the full P&amp;Z commission meeting on this topic, and the vote was close. It was three to two, and the two supporters clearly explained their reasoning and why they agreed with the city staff that the development was in accordance with the regional plan. But of the three that voted against it, only one of them gave a justification. So he explained that his opposition was because of the lack of municipal waste planning. But the other two did not give any justification or explain why they thought that the development was not in accordance with the regional plan. So just in the interest of transparency, I think it would be good to have a meeting just to understand exactly why it was voted down and why it's not in accordance with the regional plan. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Denham. Next public participant.
Summer Johnson, you can go ahead and speak now.
Thank you. My name is Summer Johnson. I'm a resident of Presidio. I live three doors down from the proposed condominium complex, and I am strongly opposed to this because, again, it is three doors down from where I live. I don't feel like we, as residents, were given proper or fair notice when this all started to develop. We found out hours before it all came about as news to us that had been changed from the original plan that we were presented with from the realtors and the developers, that it was going to be a church or green space. That changed rather quickly when they wanted to put condos in there. The rest of our neighborhood is not three-story properties. We have two-story properties throughout the neighborhood, and I absolutely am not against affordable housing in Flagstaff. But in one of the first meetings for this development, it was stated by Miramonte that this was not going to be affordable housing. In fact, they changed it to include 10% to be affordable housing, which is only three units, or 3.9 units. So I think that's kind of a little shady on their part. I've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on my house. I've been in Flagstaff my entire life. I'm raising my kids there. And if I had known that they were going to be putting a condominium complex right across the street from where my house is, I probably would not have bought where I did and put my money and my life's investments into that. I just think that's something to really consider. The parking is already terrible in Presidio. We don't have enough parking for our residents as it is. Traffic control is going to be an issue, especially around that cul-de-sac, and we have the addition of Timber Sky right across the street, which does have affordable housing built into their master plan. There's going to be a noise issue, and at one meeting, the Miramonte lawyer brought up that the original plan had included these condos or similar condos, but the original plan for Presidio went bankrupt. That was back in 2004. So this is a whole different, I mean, it maintains the name, Presidio in the Pines, but it's a whole different planned community. And just, you know, as a mom, as a nurse, as a resident in Flagstaff, I have a lot of concerns about this, and it's really going to change how our neighborhood looks and feels. And I just, I implore the council just to leave the decision that the Planning and Zoning Commission made as is. There's plenty of other places where we can build affordable housing in Flagstaff. This is not the answer to our housing crisis at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. City Clerk, next public participant.
Brandon Johnson, you can go ahead and give your comments now.
Hello. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Hi. As the other residents said, I am not in favor of this condo project. I understand what they're saying about, you know, the neighborhood could have been more dense, but anybody that doesn't think that that's a dense neighborhood, come drive through that neighborhood, like around rush hour. We have very small yards. We have very limited parking. The condos is only going to make it worse. Snow removal, trash. They didn't do any further traffic studies. They don't have their drainage figured out. They're trying to put in three stories when there's no three stories in that neighborhood. It's not common for the neighborhood. Like Tiffany said, Track A and Track B was supposed to be up to five stories. Well, they didn't do it. So now there's one little parcel of land left in this neighborhood. It's basically built out, and now they want to start building three-story condos? It's not normal for the neighborhood, and I'm just asking that you uphold the no vote that was already, you know, it was turned down. So just, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
City Clerk, do we have others?
No, that was the last one. Thank you, Mayor.
That was the last one. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, counsel, I'll open it up here. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say that I attended the Planning and Zoning meeting that discussed this issue, and both sides had a lot to say. My understanding, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we don't do anything on this, if we don't move forward to at least have a discussion about it, the project is dead. There won't be a two-story building. There won't be a three-story building. Just won't be any building. I guess we'll have to go back to making it a church or whatever. Of course, there's no church that's interested in this property, apparently. So I would suggest that we move this forward, and we have a discussion, and, you know, maybe there can be some room for compromise with the builder. But to just let this project die because of a very close decision by planning and zoning, I don't think is appropriate. I think both sides deserve the opportunity to present their case to council, and then we can make a rational decision after we hear all sides. There was a lot to say at the meeting, and as people pointed out, the two members that strongly supported this had very strong arguments, and one member talked about, we're having problems at the landfill, and the other two members didn't say anything. So anyway, I suggest that we at least have a discussion about it, and that's all we're trying to decide tonight. And then after we have that discussion and hear from both sides, then we can make a rational decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Others? Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would echo the support to move this forward to a city council review of the conditional use permit that was denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission with the three to two vote.
Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. I watched the P&amp;Z meeting, and I have a lot of questions as to why it wasn't passed, so I would like to move this forward and have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor. I too watched that P&amp;Z meeting and left with more questions than answers, and I think it's time and appropriate that this is elevated to the council level, so I'm glad to hear that council agrees and is willing to move this forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to echo what everyone else is saying. It seems very appropriate to me that the next step forward for this is for full council to deliberate upon it.
Agreed.
All right. Well, I'll just say that, you know, I need to learn more about this as well. I think we need to get an educated decision in moving forward with it, but I'm always very trepidatious about something that a commission has voted down. And I tend to be much more leaning towards those who know more about code compliance and so forth than I do, and the purpose of having these public commissions is to be able to take their advice from these kinds of things. So I'll say that I'm okay with moving this forward, but I'm very trepidatious about where I'm going to stand in the end of this, so.
Mayor, if I may, I think that's very fair, and I agree with you for the most part. I do think that there is a commissioner at play here who is in a pattern of voting everything down for the same reason all the time. So I'm not sure that we're experiencing the commission working at its full capacity in good faith, and I am looking forward to making the conversation one that's up here at the dais in front of city council, and we can get all the good reasoning, pro and con, out on the table and out in the public. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. With that, do we?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I'm just wondering if we need to do a motion with this.
Right. It does call for council action, so we would need a motion for council to review the CUP.
All right. He put his hand up first.
No pride of authorship here. I move that we move council review of this conditional use permit, Miramonte Presidio for Track M. Move it forward and have a council discussion on the matter and possible reversal of the CUP. Thank you. The planning and zoning decision on the CUP. Thank you.
You want to second that, Councilmember Shimoney?
I'll second.
All right. Seconded by Councilmember Shimoney. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. This is the big one. American Rescue Plan. We're on Agenda Item 15A, Discussion and Direction Regarding American Rescue Plan Act Local Recovery
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Rick Tatter, City Management Services Director and City Treasurer. The item before you is a discussion about the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, for local recovery funds. There are many other funding opportunities in the American Rescue Plan Act, but tonight is specifically about the local portion of the recovery funds that are allowed. Along with me today is our team that has worked on the American Rescue Plan Act for local recovery, including Stacy Brekler-Naggs, our grants and contracts manager, Sarah Langley, the interim public affairs director, Morgan Mulaney, our grants and contract specialist, and Glorious Thousand, our accountant. As well as our budget team members are available for questions also, as these were their recommendations for allocations. The ARPA team has spent countless hours focusing on the local recovery funds through many reviews of treasury guidance and rules, as well as many, many webinars provided by several agencies that we respect, and there is so much more to learn. The ARPA team has worked with the budget team to develop a proposal that is provided for you in today's packet. For our discussion today, we're going to give you a brief overview of the American Rescue Plan Act for local recovery. We're going to talk about some reporting requirements. We're going to do a quick review over the eligible categories, the 66 categories allowed. We're going to go through the budget team proposal that we've drafted. We're going to open up for council to talk through and adjust the budget team's proposal as you feel appropriate, hopefully getting guidance from city council. And then we'll talk about the next steps we'll develop going forward. So first up, I will pass it off to Sarah Langley to talk about the overview.
Thank you, Rick, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Sarah Langley, interim public affairs director, and I will join you virtually this evening for a few slides. So before we dive into the details, I'd like to just give a quick overview of the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, and the intent of the state and local recovery fund. Next slide. Thank you. So ARPA was, as Rick mentioned in his introduction, a massive piece of legislation, and it really included aid for a lot of different sectors of society. So the piece that we will be focused on tonight is support provided for local governments through the state and local recovery fund. But ARPA also provided support for individuals, for unemployment funds, for housing, small businesses, and for education and healthcare organizations. So a lot of the city's major partner organizations also received significant amounts of funding through ARPA, even though they're not a local government entity. Next slide, please. So within ARPA, the state and local recovery fund sets aside $350 billion for the whole country to help local governments, and those funds are really to help local governments address the public health emergency and the negative and the negative impacts on local economies that that caused, to support essential workers, to help local governments make up for reductions in revenues, and to make investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure specifically. It's also important to note that ARPA state and local recovery fund monies cannot be used to offset a tax deduction, and they can't be used for pension funds. And then next slide. So as with any piece of legislation, Congress writes the legislation, and then it's up to administrative departments to interpret the intent of that legislation and to issue guidance on how it should be implemented. The U.S. Department of Treasury issued what they're calling an interim final rule to help establish a framework for, you know, determining what types of programs and activities would be allowable under ARPA. But we are still waiting for the Treasury to release their final, final rule. So there could still be some slight changes in what is eligible under ARPA. And next slide, there we go. So lastly, as you are likely aware, ARPA is probably not going to be the only piece of infrastructure legislation that we'll see this year. The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act has bipartisan support, and it will likely become law at the end of this month as the current spending authorization that covers a lot of those areas expires on September 30th of this year. So this bill focuses on traditional infrastructure elements such as surface transportation, airports, and water infrastructure. But it also does include funding for broadband and things like clean energy and community resiliency. And then even though this, this bill will likely be passed soon, it will still take probably many months for the funding to be available for communities and for us to really know what that will look like, what those numbers will be. And then apart from that, we have the larger FY22 Budget Resolution Framework. And currently, estimates put this at around $3.5 trillion. So truly massive. But it's a much more controversial bill and its pass, sorry, its passage is a lot less certain as it lacks bipartisan support. Right now, we only have generalizations about what would be in this bill. And we could anticipate things like paid leave, childcare, healthcare, and education. But a lot could change, and we're not sure if this will get through. So that is just a brief overview of other infrastructure funding efforts that are going on at the moment and of monies that may be available to complement ARPA funds in the future. So with that, I will hand it over to Stacy Breckler-Nags to talk about compliance. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Stacy Breckler-Nags, Grants and Contracts Manager and Disaster Recovery. A lot of flood work lately. But welcome and thanks for allowing me to be virtual also. And I want to take a moment to introduce Morgan Mulaney. And Morgan, if you can turn your camera on real quick. She works for me. I was the Grants and Contracts Assistant, but we have recently promoted her to oversee these funds as the Grants and Contract Specialist. This grant or this funding allows for administrative time, and it's gonna take extensive management work. And then Glorice, that's sitting in the crowd with you there, is going to be the accountant also with Morgan to oversee these funds. So welcome and looking forward to working with you, Morgan, in this new role. And then with that, I do want to thank Rick Tatter and the overall team and the budget team. This has been a lot of work behind the scenes to review the compliance, the guidance, the interim rules that Sarah Langley talked about. And so we're looking forward to be able to, to figure out how we can program these funds today. Some of the compliance and reporting, just at a high level, is we're required to respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency and meet our community needs with this funding, advance the racial equity, and support underserved communities. And then, of course, be transparent and be publicly accountable for the funds that we've received, work and meet our statutory eligible uses, and meet, as Sarah mentioned before, the interim and then the final rule that will eventually come out to meet those requirements. As far as the cost timeframe, the period of performance was March 3rd and then ends December 31st that we need to have to the, the performance period. And then funds must be expanded by December 31st of 2026. And then, as most federal grants, we're required to follow the Uniform Administrative Requirements to CFR Part 200. CFR stands for Code of Federal Regulations. So that's the uniform requirement for all federal grants. And then lastly, the compliance with any award terms and conditions that are part of these funds. The next slides. Thanks, Rick. And then reporting requirements, the first interim report was due August 31st, 1st of 2021. And yes, we did submit that and got our first report submitted. And then we'll start with quarterly project report and expenditure reports following this next quarter. Some of the required information in those reports are the projects. Rick mentioned the 66 projects, but what we drill this down to, what we identify we want to fund, the expenditures, the project status, project demographics, if there are any, subawards, and then civil rights compliance and programmatic data. And I think with that, I'll say goodbye and be available for questions. All right, Rick, thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Sarah. The next part is just a high-level review of the eligible categories. You've seen the list of 66 categories, but we're gonna kind of start high-level in this area. The U.S. Treasury has provided guidance in June or so about what the categories are and what the reporting categories will be for the American Rescue Plan Act. And here are those seven categories that have been listed. Within each one, there are several subcategories, making a total of 66 subcategories for our American Rescue Plan Act local recovery funding. The funds can be used for public health, negative economic impacts, service to disproportionately impacted communities, premium pay, infrastructure, revenue replacement, administrative and other costs. The next few slides go through all the detail of the lines. I'm not gonna speak through all these. I don't have a whole lot to add to each one, but these are the items that'll guide us. Once we get to your direction, our staff will go back and dig into these subcategories and make sure we fit the requirements of American Rescue Plan Act. So these slides, again, I'm just gonna fly through these quickly to get to our discussion from the budget team. There, that was quick. So took a bunch of slides out. So now we're gonna talk about what the budget team had a conversation of, what we talked about providing funding, and what we are seeing as a balanced plan, an approach to the American Rescue Plan funding. So last month, the budget team met a couple times to talk about programs, services, and activities that would make up a recommendation of using the American Rescue Plan Act funding for local recovery. We identified 15 different programs or activities that we thought were important for our community, and we'd like to move forward as a recommendation. This was a collaborative approach with budget team and the well-developed team that we have. And I believe it is a well-rounded utilization of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Much of this, the budget team discussed, was some of your conversations that you've had at the dais and in meetings, as well as some communications we had with council members about the American Rescue Plan Act funds, as well as some of the community input that we've heard out in the community. What I'd like to do right now is walk through each of the 15 items and kind of explain what the budget team is looking for in our proposal. Change this slide. We did number the requests, 1 through 15, just to help follow along. And later, we'll have a spreadsheet that aligns the numbers also, so you can quickly identify which one you would like to speak to. First off is a vaccination incentive program. We would look to see this to be a partnership program with the Coconial County Health Department, providing incentives to community members who have been maybe a little hesitant in getting their vaccinations. We heard from council back in, maybe it was May or June, that you were interested in incentive plan. With further guidance from the Treasury, we do find that it is available to use our recovery funds with this. So that is our first recommendation. These are not in a priority order. That's just the first one on this list. The next item supports Congress-setting, setting agencies, such as shelters, schools, nursing homes, and those types of facilities. This is where we look to provide support, financial support, to help prevent the spread of COVID-19, possibly partnerships with a county. And just as a note, unfortunately, these types of funds, as mentioned earlier by Stacy, there is an effective date of March 3rd, so we cannot go retro and, and reap and pay for expenditures that occurred in the past. One item has been suggested, far as shelter services and the cost that they incurred for hotel rooms and so forth prior to this ARPA funds. Everything we read is we cannot go retroactive before March 3rd on this type of fund. So we're looking at proactively in the future, if there's funding to help with them in those Congress settings to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. The next item.
Yeah, we have, sorry, Councilmember McCarthy has a question on that.
When you say March 3rd, March 3rd, 2021 or '22?
'21. Did I say '22 earlier?
You didn't say what year, so '21, thank you.
March 3rd of this, this calendar year, yes. The third item on the list is support of mental health and substance abuse services, or substance use, I apologize for that. This is a concept of adding possibly some staffing or ambassadors in our community to help with those with, that need mental services, mental health services, or in a substance use environment, that we have ambassadors in our community to possibly help out areas like downtown and certain areas that are maybe a little more active. And we also see this as a possible partnership with Coconial County and possibly with the Downtown Business Association. The third item is a pilot program to assist with advancing alternate care services. This has been a big topic with the council, and we are moving forward with some funding in this budget cycle. We are looking to allocate 2.4 million on this topic. And our approach to this is we'll, you know, have some conversation what this looks like. But it could be possible of renting facilities for areas of, let me get back to my notes here. Rental areas where there's a lot of congregation of individuals, some safe places, and potentially areas that a facility could have behavioral health support within the facility. That's one idea the city budget team has brought forward for consideration. Number five is support of small businesses with potential business grants. This is additional financial support to our local business community. We know our small businesses have been impacted pretty hard from this pandemic for the last year and a half. It's been quite a long time. And we're looking to see how we can maybe financially support, you know, through applications for funding and partnership, again, with Coconial County. And possibly, they can add funding to this pot to help our businesses. Item six is our support of tourism-related businesses. As we know, our tourism-related businesses took a big hit in this pandemic. People not moving around as much and hotels and restaurants had less revenues in this last year. They could use some, some help in this coming year due to the very hard economic hit they've had this last year and a half. We're looking for this funding to help those businesses grow and thrive in the future. Number seven is support of nonprofits and other agencies that have been impacted negatively from the pandemic. We have some ideas in here as far as providing grants in our arts community, providing waivers for our special events, community events, to help those producers bounce back and provide those within our community. And we also see that maybe we partnership with an agency such as United Way to provide a grant program for our other nonprofits that we have in our community. Number eight is contracted human resources services for recruitment. We, our HR department has been extremely busy in the last few months with hiring. We have a lot of vacancies out in our staffing, and we are hiring a contracted individual to support our HR team in the recruitment process, filling the heavy workload from all the vacancy, vacant positions that we currently have. Number nine is investing in early education opportunities. Again, we see this as possibly a partnership to provide early education opportunities, partnering with potentially NAU, FUSD, and Coconial County and others to provide some type of format to enhance early education. Number 10, assistance for academic opportunities such as STEM or STEAM, as I've heard it also. Those related programs. Funding to increase these educational opportunities for science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics within our community, for our community members. Again, potential partnerships for funding to develop these kinds of educational opportunities, or maybe an opportunity to invest in a facility to build, to run STEM-related activities out of within our community, within maybe a area of higher need, disproportionate need in our community. Number 11 is Housing Assistance Program, 450,000. This is support, of course, affordable housing opportunities, which could look like several things. We would look at revolving loans, possibly providing to start ownership and getting people into homes in our community, services for the unhoused persons in our community, and other potential housing assistance to help move that needle in our community as allowed by the American Rescue Plan Act. Number 12 is premium pay, possible premium pay support for workers performing direct work in public health and public safety areas. This is an area the budget team has taken a lot of conversation on, and, and we know there are several areas that are being difficult in keeping enough people in the seats. High vacancy areas such as dispatch potentially are some of the areas we'd like to invest some of the American Rescue Plan Act to help develop and keep more positions filled in those critical positions, especially within public safety. And our last three. 13 is improvement to water and wastewater cybersecurity measures, including fiber projects to facilities of $1.5 million. This is capital project support for water and wastewater facilities that will help advance critical cybersecurity needs and measures that we have for our critical water and wastewater systems by developing fiber connections to those facilities throughout the city of Flagstaff. This funding would likely focus on the connection to Wildcats, would be about a $1.5 million project as outlined by CJ Perry, our Information Technology Director. This is one that the budget team asked to move forward. For a more extensive connection to the facilities for water and wastewater, the full buildout is approximately $4.2 million. We see that there could be future infrastructure funds, as Sarah Langley has mentioned, that maybe those will be appropriate to enhance what we're contributing in ARPA, use some other federal funds as they come forward. Number 14 is our revenue loss replacement. As you know, in April of this year, budget team brought forward a budget proposal for replacing $9 million in lost revenues for budget items that the budget team had to pass on, because we did not have the revenues to fund these. We had a conversation with council and approval to approve that $9 million in, in budget expenditure. expenses. However, as we move forward and receive further U.S. Treasury guidance in the interim rule, the way they look at revenue loss is different than I would look at revenue loss during a pandemic. They're a little more strict as far as they want it looked at a calendar year, they want to look at an organization as a whole, and it just doesn't fit what, what we really see as, as revenue loss. So based on new guidance from the Treasury, and we're hoping to have additional changes from them with the final ruling, we are now looking at a maximum of about 4.5 million dollars in revenue loss. So with that, the budget team will, as, as we tighten up that number, the budget team will have to come back and look at what we already approved in the budget and look at what can still move forward. How do we prioritize those that we brought forward to you in April? So those are already committed to those types of, of projects. It could go down based on future rulings, but at this point, that is our best estimate. And the item 15, the last item, ARPA Local Recovery Funds does create a lot of work as Stacy LeBrecque, our Grants and Contract Manager has mentioned. And we're looking to use these funds to enhance our ability to deliver on these funds. It is a lot of work and a lot of focus, and the staff is already pretty heavy in workload with many other grants and many other contract opportunities. So with the heavy reporting, heavy compliance, we did promote Morgan Mulaney, and we're thrilled to have her as a Grants and Contract Specialist, and she will be the focus person for all the research and compliance and reporting for the organization as well as the divisions and sections we'll be working with. And this is just a critical need that we, we do need that support at this time. It could be at some point, we need outside help also to advance this. But right now, we are, we are looking at reserving some funds from ARPA to help us manage this grant. So with that, that's the outline of the budget team's proposal. I don't know, City Manager Clifton, if you have anything to add to that proposal? Otherwise, we'll open it up for council conversation.
Before we do so, we do have one public commenter online that I'd like to take.
Devonna McLaughlin, you can go ahead and give your comments now.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just wanted to check and make sure you can hear me?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Technology is a blessing, and I so appreciate the opportunity to provide comment on this topic, especially wearing multiple hats to get my kiddos to hockey practice at Jay Lively. So thank you for that investment in our community as well. My name is Devonna McLaughlin, and I have the honor of serving as the CEO of Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. We're a local nonprofit housing provider who looks to do pretty much anything related to affordable housing, whether it's investing in trying to help folks transition from homelessness at Sharon Nanner all the way to becoming first-time homebuyers with down payment assistance, funded in part by the City of Flagstaff, to homeownership preservation through foreclosure counseling, you name it, there is a need in our community for affordable housing. And so it's my soapbox again tonight to respectfully ask council for additional investment in affordable housing. I appreciate that there is a line item in here for housing investments. I think 450,000 will go pretty fast, and I know that the need is great in our community, and there's lots of ways that folks can get help, whether it is down payment assistance or development of new rental units or land acquisition, or you name it. But my plea to council is to consider increasing that investment in affordable housing through ARPA funds. This is a one-time gift, a one-time grant, and it would be great to see acquisition of assets or revolving loan fund, and really investing in making sure that there's units available for our workforce for folks experiencing homelessness. You name it, you can find need. So that's my ask and request of council tonight, first to thank you for considering housing period, and then to see if that investment could just be a little greater to help some more families in our community as the need is so great. So thank you for your discussion and consideration and for all that you do to support housing in our community and our workforce. It's needed and appreciated and just can't say it enough. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. We do have a question for you from Councilmember Shimoney.
Hi there, Devonna. Thank you for calling in and helping us with this. So you're asking for grant money to be set aside for creation of new housing. How much would you say would be appropriate to, to make any kind of impact?
Sorry, you cut out there. I, I heard appropriate, and is that it?
Oh, how much would you say would be needed to, to make any kind of significant impact?
You know, housing is expensive. Materials costs have gone up, labor costs have gone up. If you're looking at development and even with leveraging additional resources that could come from the state or loans for mortgages or construction costs, I kind of think a minimum of a million dollars is kind of what I'm hoping could be found in order to invest in affordable housing.
Okay, my second question for you is in regards to eviction prevention. Any, any feedback or insights as to how we can support eviction preventions in the community?
So the hard part here is that there are resources for eviction prevention. It's just, I, I, as I understand it, there's a backlog of connecting folks who need the money with the money that's available. The state has ERAP, Emergency Rental Assistance Program, funding. My understanding is Coquenio County has some money again, which is great. Those programs are wonderful in that there's funds available. I'll tell you, as a landlord who really works with their tenants to get through and navigate that portal and to get assistance to folks, it's not the easiest. I can only imagine how much harder it would be if you didn't have a landlord who was helping you, or perhaps English was your second language, or you don't have access to technology. So those are the barriers that I see is getting the money to the people who need it, not a lack of funding. And so I honestly don't know how you overcome that except advocacy at the state level to maybe loosen requirements or to get better outreach to folks in our community to get help to navigate that online portal, maybe some assistance for folks who aren't native English speakers. There's got to be ways to, to open that, that resource for accessibility, which I think is the backlog at this point.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other public commenters?
Yes, Mayor, Monica Fuess, you can go ahead and give your comments now. Monica, you can go ahead and unmute and give your comments now. Okay, Mayor, it looks like, if she comes back online, I'll let you know.
Okay, was that the, Ms. Fuess, the last individual?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. Yeah, please let me know if she comes on again and I'd like to hear her input.
So for, so part of the council conversation, we've developed a spreadsheet. Hopefully you guys can see it on your screens. Okay, there it is. I have Glorice to help me out with some of the conversations. We have the budget proposal here listed out by the 15 categories. We do have, you can add categories if you have some things that maybe we missed as part of our target. And we would look to see, what do you think as far as adjustments, as far as adding funds to a pot or taking away and, and helping us balance this proposal that we have in front of you. The one item, the 4.5 million, really that's a pretty solid number right now for us to use, so that's not one that we can really move around at this point. But we're, we're open to hear from you as council and get your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter. Vice Mayor.
I have a question, Mr. Tatter. What does direct assistance look like? Would we have to say we wanted to put money in one category? Do we have to do RFPs, you know, for nonprofits to apply for that, or how does that work?
Yeah, we are going to be required to do the required procurement processes. Federal rules will also be included in those procurement processes. Of course, items above 50,000 will come back to council for your approval, but it will take time to solicit, or if we have an existing contract, we can partner or partnership on and bring that forward to council to amend is a potential opportunity. But we do see a bit of procurement activity for these types of direct funds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I have a follow-up to that question. So I am particularly interested in identifying specific nonprofits that provide direct services that's also a part of our mandate to provide services for, including the Flagstaff Shelter Services, the Humane Shelter, and the Food Center. Can we call out those organizations so we could have direct allocation to provide funding for those specific nonprofits?
I would caution by calling out specific names and organizations without going through the background of a procurement process. I think we can talk about in, in numbers as far as the groups of nonprofits that you're talking about. That's kind of why we put just the high-level dollar amount, and those types of things can fit within these types of direction. So if you, if you speak to us as far as what activities you want to support, we can, we can talk about that and as a budget team, we can see how we can focus those funds in those areas.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter. So with that recommendation, I would ask a council support to identify support services that offer shelter for homeless, shelter for animals, and food services and nutrition, food and nutrition services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to staff for your work on this. What, what a gift to be discussing how to spend these millions of dollars, really, and really kudos to our team and our leadership for putting us in this position to, to have this conversation. So I've been looking forward to this conversation, I'm sure as many of you have for a while, and I do have some thoughts. I'll start with what I think we should add in addition to this, and then I'll touch upon what I think we maybe can cut back on to help kind of create those funds to allow for those. Like Councilmember Salas mentioned, I'd like to see us create a line item for food agencies in the community that are working to provide food, supplementary food to those in need. And I'd also like to see us add a line item for temporary job opportunities for those disproportionately impacted by the pandemic, and I'm thinking, you know, temporary labor funding. And, and I guess I could throw out numbers with this, Rick, if this helps. So I'm thinking 25,000 for the temporary job services and then 70,000 for the food support. My understanding is the, the local agencies are asking for 70,000 for additional staff and/or 60,000 for a new vehicle. So I'm thinking 70,000 for staffing, but that might be getting too much in the weeds, but 70,000 for food support. And then I personally really like what Devonna was talking about. I think our biggest issue in our community, as we all heard from our community loud and clear, is that housing is a crisis and an emergency and that our economic issues are rooted in the lack of housing for our workforce. So, you know, jumping ahead a little bit, you know, when I look at support for businesses, I think, well, what they need is housing for their workforce. That's one of the best things we can provide a local business is a solid, grounded workforce in the community. Obviously, there's more to that, but I love to see us create a grant opportunity for new housing up to 50% AMI. So really trying to hit upon some of those lower AMI levels. And I'd love for us to be able to put a million dollars towards that, as Devonna mentioned. And then last but not least, the previous council allocated funding for emergency relief that we channeled through the county, and that was to help individuals with minimal barriers. So meaning you didn't need to apply through some kind of state agency with a social security card number to receive those funding, but they were able to get those funding at a very low barrier. And talking to members in the community that work with individuals who at times struggle to get federal funding, that was very helpful, and, and they were asking if we could do some more. So the number that I came up with with these local groups is 100,000, and if we were able to do that, that'd be incredible. Those were the things I'd like to see us fund. And then the hard part is talking about what do we cut back on to fund those things. And so my comments there, Rick and council, is here we go. I know this is going to rub some people the wrong way, but I struggle with the incentive program, number one on the list. It's like if you have, it's free. If you want a vaccine, you can get it. Our county's done a great job. You know, we can push the people as hard as we want, but at the end of the day, it needs to be their choice to get a vaccine. So I'd say lower that to 200,000. It would be my personal recommendation, freeing up 300,000. Because I believe that supporting housing is supporting businesses, personally, I thought 300,000 would be appropriate for small businesses, so taking that down by 200,000. And obviously, I want to hear from my colleagues on council as to your thoughts about that, but that would free up 200,000. Tourism, I'd like to see us cut that down by 150,000 to 200,000 as well, freeing up another 150. And then nonprofit support, cutting that down to 400,000, freeing up 325,000. And then performing direct work in public health and safety areas, cutting that down to 800,000, saving us 200,000 there. And if my math is correct, that frees up 1,175,000. And yeah, that definitely covers at least what I was hoping we might be able to do, but I'm very curious to see how this discussion continues. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council.
Thank you. Just a moment while we get our numbers.
If we could just get it balanced and, you know.
Can I just piggyback off of that?
We'll fluctuate on this. Were you talking about an additional million to housing or above the 450,000?
Yes, so I think as Devonna was saying, a million for a grant opportunity in addition to the 450.
I'm sorry to interrupt. That's an increase to a million, correct?
Sorry, an additional million to be separated out as a grant opportunity to be utilized for new housing creation of housing up to 50% AMI in addition to the 450 that will be used for eviction prevention and down payment assistance, kind of two different categories, keeping people in housing versus creating new low-income housing, workforce housing.
And did you, were you talking about the premium pay going down to 800,000, take 200 off there?
Correct, thank you.
Pretty close. All right, thanks.
Councilmember Assland.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate that. I, I think my comments are going to piggyback nicely off of what Councilmember Shimoney has already said. Really, what I think needs to happen, and I'll try to keep this pretty simple, we need to boost our social safety net, and if that has to come at the expense of anything, it should come at the expense of small business and tourism support, infrastructure, and what else was I going to say? Revenue loss replacement. So those are my general guidelines, and I think more, others will get more into the weeds on this, but, but those, those are the sorts of maneuvering I'm going to support.
Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let me share with council what I learned from the National Association of Workforce Conference that I attended in June. There are four barriers to workforce these days across the nation. First is the mismatch of skills and training that the workforce have vis a vis what businesses need in terms of hiring. So there's that retraining and reskilling aspect for both disconnected youth and adult reentering in the workforce. Number two, housing, 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 housing for workforce. Number three, transportation and transit, especially in the rural areas where it's a challenge for adults entering the workforce to get to and from places of employment or workplace. Number three is, I'm sorry, number four is childcare. So with that said, I, so I did mention that in addition to the services that I mentioned earlier for the shelter, the animal shelter and food service, I am, I'd like to include in the list that hasn't been identified, which is number 2.7 in the services for services to disproportionately impacted communities. And 2.7 is job training. Specifically targeting the disconnected youth aged 18 to 28 and adult reentering the workforce for reskilling and retraining. I don't have a number for that yet, but I can come up with a wish number eventually. You want me to come up with a number?
If you have a ballpark, or if you want us to come back and budget team can look at it and see what would be a reasonable funding?
Yeah, I would.
We're willing to take your direction.
I would, I would, to make a dent, to provide those specific trainings to our workforce to be able to get that hireable and transferable skills. I would like to come up with at least 500,000. And then, Mayor, if I may proceed, as I have the mic, I would support the small business grants with higher number. Double that if possible. Keep the tourism-related businesses support as recommended by staff.
Maybe it'd be easier if we just created a new column in that Excel file, since if we're gonna we're not bouncing too much back and forth.
We're going to try this.
Yeah.
It's a work in progress.
I support, I support the hazard pay for frontliners specific to public health and safety employees.
Say that again, the line 12?
The premium pay, the premium pay for.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're saying the tourism remain the same?
Yes. And then, and then across, across the, all the line items, I support those just have to move dollars. And I do want to support the housing assistance program with a minimum of 1 million. And that is separate from the eviction rental, eviction prevention and rental assistance and services addressing homelessness. Again, let me also share another success story that I learned from that conference that I attended in June. There's a small town in Texas, and I'm blanking on the name of the town. But their success story as a COVID response is they did pop-up service, targeting, targeting areas that are low income or the marginalized or disproportionately impacted by COVID. And those wrap-up service included vaccine, food, childcare, shuttle to and from the pop-up, and the front door services where they either, where they either get set up in the system for assistance through the Department of Economic Security. And there's also service for job recruitment. So it's really this whole wrap-up service and pop-up in communities and providing the wraparound service and access. Of course, they have, since it's pop-up, they have to come with, you know, hotspots to access all the internet access that they need. So it's one of those success stories that I've learned in that conference.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Shimon?
Quick follow-up question on Councilmember Salas's points. Do we know what the county is doing for vaccination support and whatnot? I mean, all these topics, really. I know we talked about this recently, Rick. But the county received, I want to say, 28 million plus dollars. And yes, they are overseeing public health and whatnot. But I think how they are allocating their money can really play into how we allocate ours. And we can work together and kind of, you know, complement each other and not just double down on things that we don't necessarily need to. So I think we should take that into account as we move forward.
Yeah, I can actually touch on that note, too, because I was going to drastically reduce the vaccine incentive program. Because when discussing with Supervisor Hieronimo and Vasquez and Patrice Horstman, that there wasn't much interest, as well as on council, for the idea of a direct payment to individuals, but rather a raffle type system potentially. They felt a little, seemed to feel a little more comfortable with that. And if that's the case, then that's a lot lower cost. So I would suggest for now to put that at 100,000.
And that incentive program is going to be something of diminishing returns by definition.
Mm-hmm. And I'm saying 100,000, honestly, maximum. We got a lot of issues here. I just wanted to see some level of, that we're, yeah, doing some level of COVID incentives. Yeah.
If I could just add to Councilmember Shimon's comment. The county actually had their conversation about allocating funds this afternoon. I wasn't able to get on the Zoom meeting, unfortunately. So we'll know more about what the county's looking at to participate in. And we have reached out in some of these partnerships with them to say, hey, are you willing to work with our money and your money to deliver more in our community? So we have those communications going out, and hopefully, together with their 27-plus million in ours, we can do more as a team together. So just wanted to share that. We'll follow up on what they decided.
Excellent. And yeah, I definitely think we need to look at that little X-box that says potential partners. Because anywhere we can utilize something that we value and get matching dollars for, I think is a really, yeah, great thing to do. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I agree that the vaccination incentive should be reduced significantly. 100,000 would probably be adequate, even maybe, I might even go lower than that. I did have a couple of questions. Rick, could you kind of explain what item number four is? It's a lot of money, and I'm not sure what it is in my mind.
A pilot program to assist with alternate care services. And this is an area that would enhance what we're already looking at to provide alternate care services with the current RFP we have out, and we're still negotiating. This is potentially a facility that houses some type of behavioral health, a place for people to congregate during the day. And I would ask Shannon or City Manager's Office to add anything else to enhance that consideration.
So that might be a place where instead of a person that was, you know, intoxicated on the street, instead of taking them to the hospital or to the jail, we might take them to this facility.
I will defer to Shannon.
Yeah, we could get Shannon, but that's, that's basically, the general idea is that we've already dedicated the 2.3 million for our crisis response team that has the medic and behavioral health specialist. But we don't want to just take them only to the jail or the hospital. That doesn't, so I feel like we have a lot of sunken costs at this point into that kind of program. And this will provide a little place for respite, congregation. There's also been other ideas for, you know, potentially making small 100-square-foot bungalows for people in a, or having a parking lot for them to go to. So there is a lot of ideas being generated around there, but it does fit well. The idea is to fit it with what we have already funded this last budget session.
All right. So I wasn't sure what that meant. That makes sense to me, and I am supportive of that. I think the first thing I'll say is I kind of made up my own personal list, and it had an awful lot of overlap with the staff. So you guys did a good job. I do have a couple of comments. Yeah, I think we could cut support for tourism. I already said we could cut vaccination incentives. I do support a significant increase in the money that goes to housing. In general, I think most of Mr. Shimon's comments were right on. And I do not support more money for animal shelters. I think that's kind of inappropriate, although subject to debate. I did have one other idea. You know, I have a long-term concern that the water, our wastewater from our sewage plants is going into our aquifer. I'm wondering if we could spend some of this money to at least do a study on how we might improve the quality of our water that's coming out of our treatment plants. Well, I guess the first question is, Rick, would that be eligible? And then the second question was, council have any interest in such a program? And it wouldn't be the whole program. It might be just a analysis of what can be done and some recommendations similar to what we've done on some transportation projects, where we'll get money to, like on the downtown mile, we've asked for funding to plan that out. But that won't pay for the, what we're really going to do. And this would be similar. It would be to plan it out. So first of all, first question, would that be eligible?
Yes. In the American Rescue Plan Act for local funding, there are categories for clean water. And that's talking about wastewater and those types of investments to maintain clean water. Absolutely.
So in my mind, that's something that at some point we definitely have to address. And I guess I'll ask the other council members if this would be a good time to maybe put a little money into doing some planning there. And it may be that we'd have to go to the Water Department and say, well, what would it take? You know, how much do we need? Is it 10,000, or is it, you know, a million, or whatever? So those are kind of my comments without getting into specific numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Vice Mayor, real quick, saw your hand up first.
I'd just like to echo that this is our opportunity to invest, to really make a difference in some areas in our community and boost up what we're already doing. And so housing, I'd like to see us break it out into unsheltered, as well as, as well as helping those on the lower end of the income scale to get into housing. And I'd prefer not to be too prescriptive, because, you know, we have lots of people who are working on this issue. But I'd say even 1.5 million and have half a million going toward our unsheltered in Flagstaff, and then another million to be used for however the housing staff and commission feel that it's best utilized. Also, one thing that hasn't been discussed, and this, maybe this comes under what our partners are doing, but is dealing with the flooding. And, you know, what can we use this? What aspects of what we need in terms of mitigating the flooding can we use these funds for? If any, and/or the infrastructure bill, what might that cover? So we know that we are investing something in that, even if it doesn't come from this. Do you want me to keep going, or do you want to answer that?
I may need to break that down a little bit, but let me know if I missed something. You know, American Rescue Plan Act is really related to the pandemic and the impacts of people negatively impacted from this, the disproportionate communities that were negatively impacted, and how we can better those communities. So I would struggle about assistance to the homeowners related to flooding and those types of events. I would ask our grants and contracts team, Stacy and Morgan, to see if they can really dig into that. Because the first thought is I don't believe that would be eligible, to give that type of support. For stormwater improvements, we are definitely hoping to see more infrastructure money come into our community. And we look forward to watching those. This plan does allow for, you know, clean water and drinking water projects. I believe stormwater ties into that clean water, managing the water within our community. And so those types of things will fit within this American Rescue Plan for local recovery if we wanted to put some monies toward that.
Hey, Rick.
Sorry, I see Stacy BK put in a comment to, yeah, touch base on that, so.
Hey, Rick. Thanks, Mayor. Stacy BK. And correct, Vice Mayor, I've looked through the frequently asked questions, all the guidance. There's nothing really associated for the flooding event. It's really responding to public health emergencies and the COVID-related pandemic. It has to meet that criteria. I think we can look at that infrastructure bill, though, to work to do that. And Rick is correct. As long as we follow Environmental Protection Agency for clean water and drinking water and other stormwater, we can put money towards that. And I will continue to look at the guidance, though, for you to see if there is any wiggle room. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy.
So in terms of communities most impacted and emergency, I really do see nothing as a higher priority than housing. I just want to emphasize that. I mean, this is, this list is all, you know, wonderful projects. But if, if we're really going to make a difference, and if we're really going to address something that has reached the critical level, I think that we have to, we have to be very focused on housing. So a couple of the other areas that I support, you know, grants to small businesses. I'd love to see us do something in terms of impacted communities and STEM education, putting some money into the Joe Montalvo Center in Sunnyside so that we can utilize that unutilized building. And, and I don't know if this is the right place, but we're talking about recruitment. And if we're going to contract out for some assistance with recruiting or hire additional staff, I'd really like to see us hire or contract with someone who is an expert in diversity recruitment and, and really make some headway there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have actually Monica Fuze back on the phone, and sorry, I didn't see that right off the bat. But I'd like to be able to have her comment before we continue.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Yes. Good evening, Mayor Deasy and councilmembers, and thank you for your patience with my technical issues. I'm the executive director of the Flagstaff Family Food Center, and I'm just sharing some Flagstaff Family Food Center pandemic facts to further shed some light on the needs of the community as well express some support of designating ARBA funds to nonprofits. In 2019, Flagstaff Family Food Center served 240,000 meals. In 2021, we're on track to serve closer to 350,000 meals. In order to meet the increased needs of the community during the pandemic, the FFC began a mobile distribution program with seven weekly community distributions, five of which are at our elementary schools. We have requests for more, which indicate unmet need in the community, as well as the need for free nutritional assistance that will help families and households with their finances, because families are able to come once a week, and that frees up a lot of money to pay your rent, mortgage, or utilities. Between mobile distributions, home deliveries, and food bank-based emergency food distribution programs, FFC is projected to distribute 7 million pounds of food to the community in 2021. That's up 3 million from 2019. And again, that does translate into a lot of saved dollars in households. FFC relies heavily on volunteers, needing close to 58 volunteers per day to operate 13 hunger relief programs. Over the last year and a half, FFC has had the fortune to have the help of the National Guard in the form of guardsmen stepping in to fill volunteer positions that are unfilled due to the pandemic. Also, the National Guard has provided the use of a 26-foot truck to assist in mobile distributions. The Guard is scheduled to depart on December 3, leaving FFC without a truck and in need of additional personnel to administer these hunger relief programs. We will be putting in our own request for hunger relief and support of our hunger relief services so that we can continue our work and not have any interruption to these families who are counting on us every week. So I'm just hoping that we can kind of, while housing is the utmost definite, the priority of the city, and I support that, I think that free food every week and not just inexpensive food, but well-rounded nutrition that serves the health of the household as well is very important as well. So thank you so much for your time, and thank you for just letting me share some of the ongoing information that we are getting at Flagstaff Family Food Center.
Thank you, Ms. Fuas. Councilmember Shimoney has a question for you.
Thank you, Mayor, and hi, Monica. Good evening. Thanks for joining us for this important conversation.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take a moment and thank you and your staff so much for your efforts in our community. Not only are you getting food into the hands of our community members that need it so badly today, but you're also diverting food and waste from the landfill, which very much goes in line with our sustainability and climate action plans. So I just wanted to say thank you. And if the city was able to allocate $70,000 for funding support for food services in our community, would that be sufficient in your eyes?
Actually, not at all, because with the National Guard truck leaving December 3, that could re, we need a truck to replace that, which we do have some funds for that one, but we can't meet these further requests in the community for additional, you know, distributions with Kachina and Doni Park. We can't meet any of those needs without getting a second truck today. So when that one leaves in December, we obviously currently need to put in line to get two trucks, as well as some additional staff, because when the National Guard leaves, we are not going to be able to have the 58 volunteers show up that day. So there's a transitional period. And so something more in the lines of 300,000 would help with the partial on the one truck, help get another truck, and then support a staff member to help in that transition.
And Monica, thank you. And on the lower end, what would be the minimum that would suffice?
The minimum? A truck is 125. I currently have 50 for the other, so that's 75, that's 200, and then 200 without a staff member, but we need two to three staff members. Otherwise, it's just not realistic to think that a small staff and five can get through it. So I would actually say the minimum is 300,000.
And lastly, can you just speak to what the county has been able to support you with recently?
Yes, yes. So the county is putting in 30,000 for a truck, so that goes into that original number of needing the additional funds for the other, for the truck we currently have money for. And then also have supported a staff member for two years that is, actually, we would call a resource navigator. It's kind of nice so that we are poised to not only help through our own 13 hunger relief programs, but also be a source for families to get other resources and kind of streamline that process for them so that they can get immediate help as requested.
Thank you.
And that's what those funds were for, yes, which is really a critical part of what we do also, and we're grateful for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney, and thank you, thank you, Ms. Fuas, for calling in.
Yeah, well, I've been sitting on since it started, and all of a sudden, my mute button just wouldn't go, so I appreciate your patience again. Thank you.
And we do have one more public comment, or no?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Ms. Teri Medeska, you can go ahead and speak now.
Good afternoon or evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. You know, I've been listening to the conversation, and I appreciate the work that you're doing. There are so many that are in need of these funds, and I'm going to just throw one more consideration in there for you, which is supporting the grants for small businesses. You know, our business community, and it's downtown and beyond, our small business community has been impacted tremendously over the past 18 months, and it's not over yet. We are still experiencing impacts and challenges. Many of our small businesses, we have three, four, or five employees, and they are struggling. And so if we want to continue to have the unique business community that does draw people into Flagstaff to spend money, to contribute to our tax base, they need our help also. So, you know, to try to support those small businesses, those restaurants, the small retailers, citywide, I think is really key for you to consider as well. And so I do appreciate the remaining conversation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Medeska. All right, well, then we can turn it, that was the last commenter? Excellent. Okay, well, then we can turn it back. I think Councilmember Sweet has some thoughts here.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. Thank you for the presentation and making this so organized and easy for us. And I would be good with lowering our incentives to 50,000 and divvying up that, the rest, to the business grants, to housing, and to nonprofits with a focus on the food agencies. Thank you.
Councilmember Sweet, if you could just, we were trying to get some of that into the spreadsheet. Allocate to?
Small business grants, the housing, and nonprofits with an emphasis on the food agencies.
Nonprofits. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, I got some ideas here. So to, yep, get out your notebook. Well, I had one thing that I didn't want to run by council, so right now, we're looking at $1 million for the premium pay for workers performing direct work in public health and safety areas. I definitely understand, especially with COVID dollars being directed towards that, but I feel that we should be including more than just that. We had plenty of grocery store clerks that were also on a front line in a different way. We have a lot of people who were lower income, still working, barely scratching by throughout the pandemic. And at the same time, though, that million dollars is not going to be going very far if we open it up so heavily. So here is my suggestion. With the reduction of dollars from the COVID vaccine incentives that I've already stated, I'm good with keeping the amount for the small business grants, but I say we can cut the tourism-related businesses. We're right now, the numbers I'm seeing, we're tourism industry right now is doing better than ever, so I don't think that's a need we need to fill. And with that, I'm just going to see if there's any taste for raising up the premium pay to a level high enough that we could include other essential workers in it. And I don't know how those numbers would look, or what that premium pay was expected to be. Was it going to be, you know, 500 people get $2,000? Or is there any additional information on what that was going to, like, how that would actually roll out?
So the million that the budget team has discussed was more related to dispatch, was the majority of that funding, and the fact that we were at, what, eight of 23 seats that are filled in that area? So we're looking to provide him a premium pay to also help with retention in that very important area of our public safety for our community.
Yeah, I'll add, dispatch is a good part of it. It certainly is not all of it. I don't want you to think that we're talking about a million dollars going to dispatch, but we are talking seriously about doing some things to retain the few employees that we have and to entice or give incentive for trainees and people entering into that profession. We're a little bit dire when it comes to 911 dispatch. Rick is right, eight seats out of 23 performing what could arguably be one of the most essential services that the city provides. So in addition, we have about a 30% vacancy rate within our police department, and we seem to be losing more than we're gaining, so we need to do something there. And again, all of these measures are being looked upon as being temporary until we get our staffing levels somewhat back to where they can operate efficiently. But what else can I tell you, Mayor? Most of this is in public safety.
Yeah, with the public health aspect of this, since, I mean, we don't have a public health department, is that going to be the idea for that to go to nurses or medical receptionists? Or, I'm just wondering where the public health part fits in with our, yeah?
Mayor Deasy, public health and public safety are both in that terminology that we use on here. It was primarily focused internally when we were having these discussions with budget team, as how do we help our staff with premium pays for retention purposes and those who are really in direct line with the public health-type activities, was what the budget team was focused on. We didn't look externally when we were having this conversation.
Okay, so a million dollars is just for internal to the city government?
It's a number that we landed on as budget team.
Okay. Well, I don't know what, I mean, I'm kind of feeling like that's something we may be able to shave off some of if it's just for internal purposes, or expand it greatly so that way we can include other essential workers in our community to give them an additional little, you know, stimulus, basically. So I did want to get your thoughts on that. I have a lot of other ideas, but I just wanted to kind of get the temperature of the room on that front.
Councilmember Soss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a follow-up question to City Manager Clifton. You had mentioned about the vacancy rate with our police department. Could you please tell us what that number is right now?
About 30% for sworn officers is much higher in dispatch.
30% of sworn officers? How many in actual officers in terms of numbers?
When we're fully staffed.
The 30%, how many officers will 30% make?
I believe we have 77 sworn officers fully staffed, but I could be wrong on that. We probably can get somebody online here who can give you more information on this.
So like, we're short with about 23, 20 officers? Is that fair to say?
That could be accurate. I'm going to look to staff here and see, yeah, if we have.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Scott Mansfield, Deputy Chief, Flagstaff Police Department. Currently, we are sitting, we have 119 sworn. That's including the chief down to patrol officers. We are currently sitting at, I believe, as of last week, 100, so we are down 19 officers, vacancies, vacancies. In patrol itself, we have roughly 75 uniform patrol officers, and that includes sergeants and officers. And all those vacancies are primarily in the officer rank.
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes.
Deputy Chief, thanks for joining us. So just to recap, do we have 19 vacancies then in terms of sworn officers that involve all ranks?
Yeah, so right now, our vacancies that we're seeing, the 19 vacancies that we're seeing, are in the rank of the officer position. We are staffed with sergeants, lieutenants, deputy chiefs, chief, and so forth. So the vacancies that we are seeing are in the officer rank, which is in our, primarily our patrol division. We have taken officers out of various different specialty units, and we have shrunken those units down to staff our road due to manning shortages. So I hope that answers your question.
Perhaps I can phrase it better, if I may. What is the total vacancy of all sworn positions, and that includes all ranks throughout the organization?
Are you speaking of civilian and sworn?
No, patrol officers as well as all the other ranking officers. What is the total vacancy?
Oh, okay. The total vacancy, total, is 19.
Thank you.
19 vacancies.
All right, thank you for the info on that. It just seems that we're, that's a small number of people to be giving, or to have a million dollars for, so, and Councilmember Shimoney, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager. I would be, I'm fully in favor of us supporting our dispatch, and I think that our dispatch are working tirelessly right now. I know that chief is doing a shuffle to get officers to help with dispatch. And I just want to remind council that with our alternative, alternate response efforts, ultimately, that comes down to the dispatcher's ability to handle calls and dispatch calls appropriately. And if they're understaffed, they're going to be struggling to dispatch alternatives. So, City Manager, whatever it is that is appropriate that will help that dispatch agency, I'm in favor of. If that's $800,000, that's 800, if that's 600, if that's a million, I trust our leadership to come up with the number that's most appropriate, but I fully am behind that. Mayor, in terms of your comments about bolstering that up and helping other, you know, employees, frontline workers, I'm open to that conversation. I'm curious how this is all going to pencil out in the end. I don't know if I'd say that's high on my list, but I'm open to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Soss.
Thank you. I guess this is a good moment for me to clarify my earlier broader statements, and I just want to make sure that when I say social safety net, that's understood as housing assistance, as well as alternate response assistance, and the nonprofit, especially food-related nonprofit stuff, that's where I think the money needs to be added to, for sure. I'm, I'll go on the record as saying I'm not in favor of changing the premium pay column to. I'm, I'll go on the record as saying I'm not in favor of changing the premium pay column at all. But I do think that if we need to take money to support some of these social safety net programs, we can definitely take the, sorry, I'm using the graph you have here. So I appreciate you sort of reading my mind and scrolling around up and down depending on what I'm going to say next. Reducing vaccination incentive program. I do think that that is an exercise in diminishing returns just by definition, and we have better uses for that money right now and better ways to save lives with that money. I don't know that we need to be using this money for broadband or some of those fiber projects. Although, you know, I think it's important to say that just because I'm willing to take money from one of these things, it's a zero-sum game, right, to go to other things? That doesn't mean I don't value those things or want to see zero money go to them. And that includes, when I said earlier, that we should take money from tourism-related businesses. I would say zero there for the same logic that was expressed earlier. And I do support some small grant for local businesses. But if we need to take money from somewhere to get to where we need to be with the other stuff, that would be one place where we could reduce the number a little bit. And I'll leave it there again for now. I hope it was clear what I said earlier about social safety net being the priority.
Yeah, Mr. Tatter.
Councilmember Ashland, you made some comments about kind of agreeing with Councilmember Shimon. Are you in support of increasing the housing assistance program too?
Yes.
Just want to make sure that one was noted on here. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say, when it comes to the, there is one thing on this whole sheet that really has a cost recovery associated with it, and that is the broadband infrastructure. And especially with how our, the cybersecurity threats that could occur with all of our waters tied and digitized at this point, it could be catastrophic if we don't invest in it. Plus, in addition, it goes on a lot of the lines for the economic development aspect for the broadband master plan. It connects the facilities on the same areas. So I would have liked to see that larger, but 1.5 I like because we have this potential infrastructure bill coming through that we can't use for housing. So let's, I'd like to keep that there. So where was I at? So, yeah, drop the COVID vaccine, no tourism, yeah, cut the tourism-related business. And if we're not looking to expand the direct payments, well, then let's take that pool of money and put it into the housing. It just seems logical. And if it doesn't meet the numbers that we're seeing, the one area that I definitely would consider is shaving off some of the money from the premium pay. I think we can help people out also for our own, you know, for our own employment to have housing, as we've discussed, so. But again, I'm, that is also more city manager's purview and what he thinks is a reasonable ask, so. Aside from that, yeah.
Heidi has a comment, Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Hanson, thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Heidi Hanson, Economic and Vitality Director. I, I guess I just want to have some, a quick thought that I share with you about tourism. When the American Rescue Plan first came out, it had actually been very specific that it talked about relief to tourism, the tourism segment that had been hurt for an entire year as well as broadband and small business. So if we're not going to support tourism-related businesses, I would hope that you would at least let them apply to the small business grant program that we put together. To say that they're not important and that their impact hasn't been large, it has been. They might be doing okay right now, but they are, it's going to take them a year and a half to bounce back to the numbers that they had in 2018, 2019. I couldn't let this go without saying this. This is my job, and these are the people I work for. There's 78 hotels that are going to be impacted, 264 restaurants, 95 attractions, and not to mention the campgrounds that make up the BBB revenue. So I would just like for you to consider thinking about how we could help assist these. Not all of them are doing fine. They are struggling with getting employees to run their day-to-day operations. And even though the RevPAR and ADR are seeing increases, the occupancy has not continued to be increasing over 2019 yet. And then we're going into winter. So I just want to throw this out that I would like for you to strongly consider that this is a sector of business that really is impactful to Flagstaff. We are the number one economic driver. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Hanson, for the thoughtful remarks. I also want to add to the conversation that tourism-related businesses not only cover hotels, restaurants, retail, but it also cover a lot of attractions and events, especially the companies that put up events at the Wheeler Park, Thorpe Park, Continental Downtown, at Heritage Square. There used to be events every weekend, year-round, and every day event at the Heritage Square. So now we don't have that. So please reconsider the support for tourism-related businesses as also including attractions and events that draws not only tourists but also visitors domestically and also brings our community together when these events happen in our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Councilmember Shimon?
Just a quick question, thank you, Mayor. Rick, so what's the, remind me what the plan is in the sense that you're going to take the feedback you hear tonight. Staff is going to mull it over, try to figure out something to bring forward back to us? Is that correct?
Thank you for asking that. I just had a conversation with the city manager, and I think we learned very valuable information from all of you, and we really appreciate your input and hopefully capturing some of the adjustments you would like to see from the budget team's initial proposal. I believe the budget team can go back and do some very thoughtful adjustments to these and see where we can land with a plan that fits the best for the entire council and meet your needs moving forward. And we'll do our best to manage that and make sure we meet your directions. And we'll schedule us for another meeting to follow up with.
You think within a month, or?
I hope fairly soon. We would like to get a little more direction so that we can put our team of, you know, Morgan Mulaney to really do a lot of research and focus where we want to put these funds. The more she could focus on items versus others, we can deliver this much better for council. So we are hoping that maybe in the next three weeks, four weeks, we can get back to council. That's my hope.
Okay, great. My last comment really quick, Mayor, and Council is just that I'm at first number one point. I like to adjust my column to be basically as low as, I'll meet anyone as low as they want to go. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. Something that I forgot to mention earlier and then re-looking down this list. You know, we hear this all the time, but I firmly believe this to be true, that housing is healthcare. So when we're looking at, say, the support of mental health and substance use, even looking at the alternate care, that is a huge amount of money, and we haven't quite even pinpointed exactly what we'd like to do. So I can see some wiggle room in both of those areas. And again, just making sure that we have someplace for our unsheltered and that assistance for our lower income. But especially making sure that during this time, we're keeping people housed so that they can stay healthy or get healthy again and also not contribute to the spreading of COVID.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Aslan.
Less clear than that. And I, you know, I, last thing I want to do is get in a boxing match with our esteemed tourism manager, Heidi Hanson, and also Councilmember Solis. I really appreciate the values that you're bringing to the table. But when it comes to the zero-sum game of housing assistance over tourism, I choose housing. And frankly, I'll tell you exactly why I'm speaking up on this again. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and it's not going well. I don't think we have any business facilitating events and attracting crowds to Flagstaff with these monies. It doesn't seem to make sense to me. It seems counter to the goals that we're, that we're trying to, it seems counter to the obstacles that we're trying to tackle here. And so I just want to reiterate my support strongly for housing and for social safety net services over other things. Even though all these things are important, we have to make decisions here, and that's where I'm putting my support.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. And Councilmember Aslan, I appreciate your comments. I would be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, our small business community is one of the things that makes our community what it is, and it's diverse. We add a lot to Flagstaff, and, you know, it's about recovery. So yes, housing, absolutely. But I don't want to forget or dismiss our small businesses because it has been hard. It is a long road. It's not over. And I just wanted to kind of emphasize that. I appreciate your comments, and I just look at Flagstaff and our small business community, and to me, it's a special thing that we have here. Thank you.
And to be clear, I think if tourism businesses want to apply for some of these small grants, they should be able to do that.
Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think this is a choice between housing and tourism. They're not competing. Pre-COVID, our BBB tax collection funds supports 1,800 per household in terms of parks, recreations, open space, and beautification support. That means with the collection of our BBB tax dollars pre-COVID, the BBB tax revenue funds, of course, those programs that I just mentioned. And of course, everyone loves our parks and open space and our recreation programs. And I think it's time to kind of to circle back to the industry that has sustained our economy for so long.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Well, I, for one, my brains kind of turn into mush after two and a half straight hours of this. So unless there's further comments, I think, or really if there's any further questions for, my power went off, so is there a comment on there?
Stacy VK has a comment.
All right.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a point of clarification. It goes back to the Vice Mayor's comment about the flooding and about eligible water sewer projects. Just to be clear, that this funding isn't for individual private property homeowners, but it would fund pre-project development projects for water sewer in the flooding area. It could fund design, capital improvements, planning and assessment activities, those kind of items. So just, just wanted to be, make sure that I was clear when I relayed that information to you.
Thank you for the clarification. With that, is there anything you need from us, Mr. Tatter?
If I could just provide some closing comments about next steps. Of course, we'll be back in front of you to kind of solidify this consideration that you'd like us to bring forward. Once we get those identified, it's going to take a lot of time to research and identify each program and activity that you want to fund. Our team, Morgan and Stacy, will be very busy determining the parameters of those expenses, which I believe a lot of our conversations meet what the intention was with the American Rescue Plan Local Recovery. We got to develop reporting requirements and do that work. We'll work with all the divisions and sections that have associated funding that you're looking for, such as your housing stuff. We're going to definitely partner with our housing team to develop these types of plans and bring those forward. We have to develop the procurement processes because with federal funding comes some red tape and some needs to do procurement in a certain way. So we will develop those. And of course, anything over $50,000 and above, we'll come back to you for approval. This is after we finalize everything. We'll continue the conversation with Council as follow-up. And we'll refine and change the allocations as we go further into this next year or so. The revenue required, revenue loss will be updated, and there may be additional funding there. And we'll bring those ideas to you also. So that's my closing comments. And, you know, for additional assistance that you have questions on with the American Rescue Plan Act Local Recovery, Stacy Breckle-Nags, our grants and contract manager, is the main point of contact, along with Morgan Mulaney, can help us with doing some research. If you do have questions, further questions after tonight, you want to bring up with them. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your thoughts in allocating the funds.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter, and thank you to the entire budget team. And I'll just say before we take a quick little break, thank you, Council. This alternate care response to me is just one of the top priorities. Our broadband, top priority, as you know. And I really appreciate us all coming together on all these things to, yeah, really, really help our people. So thank you, and let's take a 10-minute break, 8 o'clock, and then we can wrap up the rest of this fashionably late. All right. Stacy, are we good to, oh, my mic's working. I think we're good to go.
We are good to go.
All right. We are down to agenda item 15B. That's the consideration and direction expenditure of less than $50,000 for wastewater testing for COVID-19 at public schools. How, Council, yeah, City Manager.
This be a good time, Mr. Mayor, for, I'd like to offer a couple of comments at the beginning of this discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Mayor and Council, I know there's been process behind this particular agenda item, and that was referenced earlier tonight. And I think underlying that, of course, was explanatory comments about a need for some quick action or perhaps urgency on this. And while there's debate to be had on the timing of this, I would like you to focus on the request that's before you or the action item that's before you, simply on the merits of what's being proposed. If you could kind of distance yourself from the process that has occurred to just the merits of the action item, which is before you for very good reason, frankly. So with that, we've been very fortunate to have Dr. Hep in the audience waiting to have some dialogue with you tonight. And she could answer the technical questions that I think you're seeking. But I was just hoping we could frame the discussion in that way. Thank you.
Thank you for your words, City Manager. All right, Dr. Hep, do you want to kind of give us a little bit of, yeah, how this all works?
Well, I'll introduce myself first. So my name is Crystal Hep, and I'm an Assistant Director of the Pathogen and Microbiome Institute and Associate Professor in the School of Informatics, Computing, and Cyber Systems at NAU. I've been with NAU since 2013, and my overarching research goals are really focused on using non-invasive types of surveillance to better understand outbreaks, really focusing on RNA viruses. And so this really fit right in, this wastewater testing really fit right in with all the things that I'm doing already. Just to talk a little bit about what we do. So we've worked with different wastewater treatment plants in Flagstaff, Sedona, Munn's Park, as well as different congregate settings, including Northern Arizona University Residence Halls. And we have to sample using two different types of strategies. And we have to sample using two different types of strategies. So with the wastewater treatment plants, we use these composite samplers, and those basically take a sample every 30 minutes of about 50 mils, and then at the end of the day, we take 40 mils of a sample from that, from that total. But for the congregate settings, we had so many that we had to monitor, that instead of using these really expensive, they're about $5,000 apiece, instead of using these different, these composite samplers, we looked back into the literature and were using, so back in the day of polio, they used to use wound-up gauze, and instead of using that, we decided to use ultrasized tampons, and we actually get really good return on viral load at our congregate settings. And so when focusing on some of our different partners, when we look at city wastewater treatment plants, what those folks really want to know is they want to broadly understand how different infectious diseases, and in this case, SARS-CoV-2, how it's fluctuating over time in the population. And so we do that with once-weekly, once-weekly sample collections. And so here in the top right, you can say, you can see Wildcat, and down in the bottom right, you can see the Flagstaff wastewater treatment system, all of the different lines, and how they're leading from one place to another. At the left side of the black line is the Rio de Flag wastewater treatment plant, and then up at the top is Wildcat Hill. And so we sample from both of these locations and really consider that Rio de Flag is more representative of 86001, whereas Wildcat Hill is more representative of 86004. But actually, everything from Rio ends up flowing into Wildcat Hill. And so this is some data looking over time, so according to Epidemiological Week, I didn't realize you had a monitor right there. Okay, so looking, according to Epidemiological Week in 2020, these bars represent the wastewater signal, so the viral load at the different wastewater treatment plants. So the blue bar, blue bars indicate the viral load at Wildcat Hill, and the orange bars indicate the viral load at Rio de Flag. And so what you can see, which is consistent with the caseload over time, is that we initially had a spike in, at Wildcat Hill, which is consistent with the spike at 86004, and then later at, in 86001. But what you can also tell from this bar chart, coupled with line graph, is looking at the number of cases over time, which is represented by the black line, so that's the total number of cases in Flagstaff. You can see that our wastewater signal is spiking up prior to the number of cases, and an statistical analysis done by us, as well as other universities, including University of Colorado and Boulder and Yale, show that wastewater testing gives you approximately one week ahead-of-time prediction. So if you can see an increasing trend of SARS-CoV-2 in the wastewater, you can expect approximately one week later to see a spike in the community. Similarly, you can look and see how broad-scale interventions might be impacting caseload. So right down here at the beginning of this orangish kind of arrow, this is when the Flagstaff mask mandate was put into place, and you can see that both the wastewater and the number of cases went down quite drastically. So not only are you looking at fluctuations over time, but you're also sort of able to evaluate the community-level interventions to see how we're doing. Now, with our congregate living settings, or when we're looking at Flagstaff Unified School District, for example, would be very similar to NAU, what we really want to understand is how to allocate resources and when to allocate resources. So at NAU, what we were doing last year was three times a week sampling at several different residence halls in fall 2020 and spring 2021. We reported those results back to the NAU administration within 48 hours of pulling the samples, and then what they did is they would allocate the mitigation testing according to the most positive locations. And so if you had a site where there was no wastewater signal versus a site where there was a very high wastewater signal, you could allocate your testing towards that particular location, and that's sort of like, instead of shooting blindly, it's more of a shoot-to-kill type of thing. And one thing to point out is that this sort of coupling between mitigation testing and wastewater testing kept NAU at below 5% positivity for the vast majority of the pandemic. So when Flagstaff was up at 16%, NAU was still down at 5%. And this is due to this concerted effort. We also partnered with Flagstaff Unified School District, starting in January 2021, and that started with the remote learning sites. And so we went to the different remote learning sites, we'd take samples, and we'd provide information back to the district so that they would be able to monitor the different locations, looking for, looking for symptomatic cases that might be, that might cause increased transmission. And because wastewater, wastewater testing is not, it's not personal information, it can be shared with a larger population. So instead of just an exposed individual or a classroom, you can share those results with the entire school, and that's actually what was done. So within 24 hours of me providing results to FUSD, the district sent out a letter to the parents of the particular school, letting them know that the wastewater was positive. And so when considering this project, I think that it's, it's important for you to understand that this is not a project on its own. We actually have a lot of additional funding that's going to be going towards this effort. So number one is that we have a CDC-funded grant for $750,000, where half of that is going to go to FUSD pooled testing, where we're only going to pool up to eight individuals in the beginning. That's different from the state testing, where they'll pull up to 25 individuals. Positive results will be reported back to schools, and then schools can either decide if they want to, I don't want to say prescribe, because that sounds forced, if they want to say, okay, you should go get testing at the field house, or we're going to do Bynax Now in the case of symptomatic individuals. So that's one effort that we have going on. A second effort is funded by Arizona Board of Regents. And so when thinking about wastewater testing, we hope that COVID is going to be a short, not short-term, but you know, it's going to eventually fizzle off. And so what else can we use this research to better understand? And children are always getting sick, and childhood absenteeism is a huge issue. So what else is causing these things? If we're able to predict a norovirus outbreak, for example, a week ahead of time, and just prescribe, okay, start washing your hands because we know this is here, then that's something that might be able to curb childhood absenteeism. So we're, right now, with all the samples that we're testing, including the pooled samples and the wastewater samples, we're going to be running SARS-CoV-2 influenza A and B. We already have that up and ready to go. We also have an entrovirus assay, and looking at our data from last year, just in the, from the general city wastewater treatment plants, we found EVD-68 circulating in the wastewater. And if you don't remember what that is, it's the polio-like illness, or it's a virus that can cause that polio-like illness that was causing paralysis in children back in 2016. So, so we're not just, it's not sort of like a one-trick pony. We can look for everything with wastewater because it doesn't have to be FDA-approved because you're not providing diagnostic information back to the individual. So we can look at trends across a variety of things. And I think another point, I'll just say this right now because it's ongoing, right now, the community is spiking with adenovirus. So at our, many of our different NAU sites and our wastewater treatment plants, very high levels of adenovirus, which could be causing COVID-like symptoms. In the cases where somebody goes and gets a negative test, it very could, very well could be adenovirus. Okay, so for this project, what we're asking for is $50,000 that will allow us to collect additional samples, running around to the different school sites, and running the initial tests for SARS-CoV-2 up to twice weekly. And we'd be doing the FUSD elementary and middle schools twice weekly. The reason being is because they are, well, from up until about sixth grade, they're an unvaccinated population at this point, and so we really want to pay close attention to that susceptible group. But also looking at the high schools and wastewater treatment plants once a week. And then aside from that, we'll use the ABOR funds, so in this middle section here, to also look for the non-COVID illnesses, so the entroviruses, the adenoviruses. And then just to touch upon caveats, so caveats to wastewater testing, as you can imagine, resolution is only as good as the sewer system. So if we have multiple access points at a school, then you can say, okay, this population versus this population might be impacted because certain students will only use certain parts of the school, or they can make it, make it that way. And then finally, you can pick up long-term shedding, and the reason that that's a caveat is because it can kick a positive sample due to the shedding, but we have a cutoff, so we don't really look at anything that's below a certain cutoff because we believe that that's probably most likely due to shedding. Pros, as I mentioned, results can be freely disseminated because this is not personal health information, so families can have a better idea of the ongoing situation. So instead of your friend getting a letter because they were in a particular classroom, the entire school could actually know about it. It can be used to evaluate interventions, so the Bynax Now test is not incredibly sensitive. And so hopefully, you are picking up positives using the Bynax Now test that could be used in either the pooled testing or in standard symptomatic evaluations, but the wastewater can look to see if you're actually removing, shedding individuals from the population. It's agnostic to participation, so many individuals may not sign or consent to testing at the schools, but this is agnostic to that. So we can still look at the wastewater level for anybody who's actually using the sewer system. It's non-invasive, we're not going to the classrooms and taking time away from the students, but we are in the pooled testing project, so I'll just throw that back in there. So it's different from the wastewater. And then finally, the last thing is we can provide information regarding any pathogen of interest that might be circulating in wastewater. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Aslan?
Yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Crystal Hep.
Yep.
This is very helpful. Thank you for being here. I appreciate you waiting here all evening to be with us to do this. Can you go back to the second to last slide? I think it was the slide about funding.
Yes.
My question right now for you is, these other two sources of funding, are they contingent upon the city of Flagstaff, providing $50,000, or is, is this other project ongoing anyway?
It's going to happen. So the, for the first one, the CDC-funded project, we just got IRB approval for that a week ago, and so we're expecting to roll out consent forms to our first three schools this week. And then, but we're only going to be doing up to six schools, so we're not going to hit all the schools, but we are going to be hitting six of them. And so, yeah, it has, there's no, there's no necessary overlap between the two of them. The first one will happen. And the second one is already happening, so we're already designing these assays, and we have the option to use these assays on whatever samples we have. So for the first, the pooled testing, we're going to be using some of these adenovirus influenza A, B, entrovirus assays on those same samples, but they're nasal samples, so some of them we might not pick up because some viruses are going to be shed more enterically than they are in the nose.
Well, I'm glad to hear that whatever we decide tonight, it's not going to affect the other funding and project moving forward.
Councilmember McCarthy?
On that same slide, the middle one, that says Arizona Board of Regents, does that imply that they'll only be testing at the universities, or will they be testing at grade schools, also high schools?
Right, so the, so the purpose of this particular $300,000 is to design assays that can be used on any sample type that's going to be coming through our lab. And so if we're doing wastewater testing at the university and at the schools, we can, we can look at all of those samples using these assays. Similarly, with the pooled testing of the FUSD students in the first category, we can use these assays to, to look at those samples as well. So no, it's not tied to just the samples at the university.
So to clarify, the ABOR funding is specifically to make sure that you, to do the research for being able to include all of these viruses in the, in the test rather than just the one-shot COVID, so we can get a better picture of public health in general.
Yep.
Councilmember Shmuni?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Hep, for being with us again. Really appreciate your time and expertise and work in our community. So I'm just turning up my mind around all this. Is FUSD, so you said with the first category, it seems like that $750,000 is, is very much in partnership with FUSD?
Yes.
And that's really what FUSD is kind of like banking on to, to see this through?
Well, I wouldn't say that they're banking on it. We reached out to them back in, oh, boy, you know, March or April, when we were first putting the proposal together and said, is this something that you would like to partner on? And they were, they were happy to partner with us. So, so banking on, I mean, yes, we are planning on moving this forward.
And then, but that, that does, that only covers six of the schools you mentioned?
Yes.
And remind me how many other schools, let's say this partnership with, with FUSD and the city, would help to reach out to?
All of them, except for the ones that run on a septic system, unless the, unless the plumbing teams, for example, are able to show us cleanouts that we could actually, that we could access, but typically, we haven't been working with, with septic systems. So everywhere inside of Flagstaff city limits is somewhere that we can test.
And can you just give me a rough number as to how many schools that is?
Yeah, so I was just looking at earlier, so I believe it is 13 of the schools. I might be off by one number. So it's 13 schools that we could sample twice weekly, but then also Paula is interested in having us come and sample there. And so I also plan on reaching out to some of the other charter schools. Because of how it works, I'll just explain to you how the sampling, so sampling takes time, and so the hours that are part of the sampling, that's going to cost more money. But at the end of the day, in a particular workflow, we can run up to 24 samples. And that, the 24 samples, whether it's one sample or 24 samples, it's going to take approximately the same amount of time because it's just due to the amount of space we have on the equipment. So that's why we can do the 15 schools at FUSD or 14 schools at FUSD and add on some additional sampling to cover additional locations.
Thank you for that.
Up to 24.
And I'm just confused about the numbers. So $750,000 for six schools. But yet, $50,000 leveraged with other potential funding support, but not much more than, you know, maybe $100,000 in total, I believe it is, to reach another 14 schools-ish?
Yeah.
How does that work if six schools cost 750?
Right, so it's a good point. It's actually, so six schools are costing, what is it, 300 and, say, three, like 375, because it's split between the FUSD, between FUSD and then Phoenix-based long-term care facilities. So it's half of that, so I'll say, and, so yeah, that's the first point. But then the second point is, is that when we're sampling, we're sampling 400 students every two weeks, but for the wastewater, it's only like 15 different locations twice weekly, so 30 different locations. And so the number of regents that you go through, the amount of time, it's far reduced. Yeah. Because it takes time to take the samples from the students, so we have to go to all the different schools, get the samples from the students, and then we have to pool them together, and then, you know, and then roll the different tests. So it just, it's a different time commitment, and it's a different amount of supplies that goes into it.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, seeing Andrew, my, this last question's for you. The $50,000 that we're talking about, the city, where would that money come from?
Likely the ARPA funding, and I'm fairly certain that it's an eligible item for ARPA funding. It would be slightly less than $50,000 and would not need to go through a full-blown procurement process because that would be defeating. So it would be less than $50,000, but not much less.
Thank you. And then, sorry, one last question, and maybe someone on the panel, the council here might have an answer for me, but you might too. Do we know if FUSD's board has talked about this? Do they see value in this?
Superintendent Pensa is actually with us remotely, so we can, any questions, yeah, if.
At some point, it'd be good to go to him, but that's, those are my questions and comments for now. Thank you.
Other council members? Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you. Well, I can see how all this data would be very interesting, but what are you going to do with the data? What actions would be taken based on the data? So that's, maybe you can elaborate in some detail on that.
Sure. So as far as we go, we don't enforce any actions moving forward. We leave that up to our partners to do that. But, so let's say that you have a really, really high wastewater signal at the same time that maybe you're doing pooled testing. So then you do the pooled testing. So then you do the pooled testing, you identify your positives, and then, let's see, I'm just trying to think through this, so you identify your positives, or some positives, remove them from the population, but then the next week, your wastewater signal is still high, that would be indicative that you did not actually remove people who are shedding from the population, and that maybe to still be mindful until still be looking. Second, with the wastewater testing, it gives parents a little bit of power in some of their decisions. So let's say I get a, I get a note that my daughter was at a school where the wastewater testing, or the viral load was very high, and then I look at her and she's got a cough. Well, I'm probably gonna run over to NAU and go to the field house to get her tested for COVID. That's, that's probably how it's going to go. So I just think that that kind of information can empower parents to also move forward and get testing, but at the same time, maybe you do go get testing for COVID, turns out that you're negative, but you're still, your kid still has a nasty cough, but you know the adenovirus is really high in the community at the time. You feel a little bit better about knowing that this other virus is present at the particular time. Another thing that I can say is that with some of the sites with the twice-weekly testing, we can actually do testing over the weekend, and there are some organizations that are going to be using facilities on the weekend versus during the week, and so you can kind of narrow things down that way as well.
So basically, what you're saying is, if people know there's a high, high viral load in the wastewater, they can take precautionary actions, like say, well, maybe I won't let my kids go to school this week, or maybe I will go get them tested or something.
Yeah, I think it puts some parents, some power into the, the hands of the parents by, by giving them some data to, you know, make, make their own evaluations.
Apparently, this testing has been going on for the last year, all of that funding's gone. So were there incidents where parents did take action?
So I don't know about the particular, I did have several parents contact, people that I know, whose, whose kids went to the school, they're, oh, is this you? Was this your testing? Yes, it was. But I don't know about specific parents that did or didn't take action, I just know about this, these letters that ended up going home.
I guess what this reminds me of is, back when I was a practicing mechanical engineer, my boss had a little placard over his desk, it says, "If taking the test data will not affect the action that you're gonna take, then don't bother taking the test in the first place, don't waste the lab time."
Yep.
And that's kind of where I'm thinking. I'm not taking a position on it, I'm just kinda thinking that that's an issue that's going around in my mind.
Okay.
Well, why don't we, we could get Superintendent Pensa, maybe, on the line, and we can ask some questions, or kinda learn how this has been operationalized from that, that standpoint, rather than the lab tests.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Superintendent Mike Pensa with the Flagstaff Unified School District. There were some technical issues in the previous, like, link that I was in, so I'm counting on that Crystal's provided all the kinda science behind this project. I was catching about every third word, but it seems like the sound is working much better. I was invited this morning to attend the meeting and, and address questions, so I'll really leave, reserve the time for answering those questions. I just would share that, you know, FUSD does appreciate the, the partnership we have with NAU and Dr. Hep, both in last winter and last spring's wastewater surveillance testing, that is a program that I think you're being asked to provide support for. And then also, as she shared, a program we're about to launch, which is the pool testing. And so just wanna express my gratitude to Crystal and her staff, who've really partnered with us in trying to, you know, we're doing everything we can do to apply layered and consistent mitigation strategies, and, you know, with the goal of keeping our schools open and serving our students. And so we appreciate opportunities we have for partnering with experts within our community and other agencies to, it's a really all-hands-on-deck kinda situation. So I'll address specific questions that you have.
Thank you for being here with us, Superintendent Pensa. I know it's, it's getting late on a school night. Councilmember Shmone.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Supervisor for, Superintendent, sorry, for joining us tonight. Quick question, did they, the school board discuss this, and what, if they did, what did they, what did they, what was the outcome, and why didn't they choose to fund this themselves?
The school board has not had, you know, discussion at a public meeting, they've been informed of the pledge or commitment that, that, that is within, you know, our realm to provide to this project. The district, I've shared with the mayor, would be willing to commit $36,000 towards continuing this project, which, as I believe was shared earlier, we benefited from last winter and spring due to grant funding, but those funds are no longer available to support this project. These funds would come from our elementary and secondary relief dollars, those are federal dollars that the district has received to support our relief and recovery efforts from this COVID-19 pandemic. In our second round of funding, we had dollars budgeted for health and safety, including things such as personal protective equipment, cleaning, testing, and so we have a line item in that approved grant that could support this project. But like I said, there has not been specific discussion with the board about this project, besides me informing them of what I pledge as a commitment towards this project.
And thank you for that, and when is the board planning to meet next?
Our board, next meeting would be September 14.
And do you think that this would be a topic they might bring up?
It certainly could be, and I will, you know, work with my board president, board members, if that's something they would like to discuss further. Typically, expenditures less than $100,000 don't require board approval. Again, this is part, the $36,000 would be part of the second round of federal funding we had, which totaled like $6.1 million, which the board has had input on and received information about the expenditures of those dollars.
Thank you for that, and I guess my, my closing comment for this, this, I'm sorry, it's getting late. My, my point is, Council, what I'm thinking is, I'm wondering, do they need our support? Do they need our funding? Do they have their own money to spend on this if they see value in this? And if the answer is they need support and they do see funding, they do see value in this, then yeah, maybe we do step in as a city and help fund, but maybe, maybe they have the money and see the value themselves, and maybe they don't need our money. I don't, I just don't know, and it sounds like the board hasn't even discussed it. So I guess that's where I'm at right now, but yeah, anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McCarthy.
So it would be interesting to see what an epidemiologist would say about the need for this. I mean, I don't believe you're an epidemiologist, I think your specialty is in taking the testing, doing the data. Epidemiologists, they would focus in how useful this data is. And have other council members talked to Dr., I forget, I don't know how to say it.
Phil.
Yeah, has anyone talked to him, and what, I believe he was an epidemiologist, whatever that word is, epidemiologist. Has anyone talked to him and, and gotten input from what his thoughts are?
Yes, I have.
And his comments were?
That during times of high transmission, like we have now, there's limited need of testing, but rather wastewater surveillance provides greater value when we need to find where virus is in order to do targeted mitigation responses. It's a long-term surveillance strategy. Right now, we can expect to find positive samples at all schools.
So it almost sounds like he's saying, this is interesting, but what are we gonna do with this data? Because we already know they have COVID in all these locations, so then what's the point of taking more data?
Well, maybe we should ask Superintendent Pensa, how, how did you feel the program went in the springtime? Did it provide useful data for you for operational, operations within the schools to protect the kids and teachers?
Again, you know, we saw value in, in this project. You'll remember in the spring, we were seeing reducing rates of transmission within the community, we were able to, in March, return to in-person learning, so we found it helpful, and we had examples of this, where the wastewater test, a week, you know, five days or so before we would get a positive hit, we'd start our communications, and then it was, you know, just like, less than a week, we would see an actual positive case come out of that building. So again, I can't, I mean, the statement of, right now, we're at high transmission level, I would expect we might get positive wastewater hits at all of our schools during this time. We do hope to see reducing rates in our community and in our schools over the coming months, but this is a long-term strategy. We know that, like, over half of our student population aren't even eligible for vaccines at this time. Right now, they're saying that maybe by early winter, when they're first eligible, but then we would expect it'll take several months for students to, you know, to get the high rate of vaccination rates, where we might be reducing the spread within our schools. So I'm hopeful that we'll see rates decline over the coming months, but I can see a value of this in just one of many strategies we're implementing at our schools.
Thank you, Superintendent, Dr. Hep.
Thanks, I wasn't sure if I had to raise my hand, but I guess, so the value isn't really in seeing a presence or an absence, the value is in the quantification, right? So just like in the city of Flagstaff, we saw COVID the entire time in spring 2020, or, sorry, fall and spring 2020, and so on, but we saw how it increased and decreased, and you saw that when the masks were implemented, for example, that there was a huge decrease. And so even though it was present all the time, that's not what matters, it's the quantification that matters, that allows you to broadly look over time at how you're doing as far as implementing your interventions.
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
How, how long would this project, is this, would this be two semesters or one semester?
Yeah, we would take it through the end of the spring 2022 semester.
Again, this also evaluates not just COVID, but a variety of other pathogens that are occurring. We may be seeing a spike now with COVID, but this is over the next year, so that way we can continue as new variants come, as new issues sprout, that we have as much information on what pathogens, what variants, everything else that are traveling throughout our community, and provide, you know, more information. For example, you find out earlier that influenza is going to be in the school, you know, it's terraflu, right, for the medication for influenza? Anyways, basically, if you, the really only medications for influenza only work if you start them within the first 24 hours of getting symptoms. So if they have early detection measures, then that also helps get the proper treatments that helps reduces the amount of time kids are sick and working families are out of work because they're home with their kid. So this has a larger idea than just COVID, and it's also a lot longer around range of time than this current spike that we're hitting now. Councilmember.
Thank you. Mayor, I'm, I'm interested in this, I see value in this, I really do. I would like to see the school board discuss it before we take action, unless it's really an emergency pressing issue today, right now, we have to move forward this moment. If it, if it can wait a week or two to allow the, the school board to meet and discuss it, I see value in that in terms of doing things properly, in terms of like, letting the school board have that first say, and then letting them know that we're interested potentially in supporting them, assuming this majority, I don't even know if there is, but that's my thought.
Are we gonna move into a discussion phase?
Yeah, well, I'll just state that, you know, this is the, the school board works differently than we do, and the superintendent has the authority on less than $100,000, similar like city manager, we don't get involved in the $15,000 contract. So expecting the school board to take this on amidst many of the other issues and agendaized items, well, they, they have, they have limited time too, so, and we have the authorization on their side of this, and interest from the superintendent to be involved, so we have.
Councilmember Haslam.
Are we done with questions and ready to move the process along?
Yeah, I'm not seeing any other questions at this time.
Be down here, there, now I don't have to hold down the mic, that's a five-pound dive weight. Again, thank you very much, Dr. Nepp, really appreciate you being here and everything you've had to share with us. You know, I, I do have a lot of questions about this, some of them have been answered, but I, I still have questions. There are questions about the process, right, and, and timing, but out of respect for the city manager's opening remarks and the, the seriousness of, of the issue that's before us on its own merits, I don't think we need to visit those. But I also have other questions, too. I, I don't know that I need to revisit those. The bottom line is that I don't think we should provide direction for this expenditure right now. And I'd like to be perfectly clear, I do believe that wastewater testing has a lot of promise as an important instrument to combat the spread of COVID-19 down the road. I see this as a great tool for putting out spot fires as they arise, absolutely, but the fact is, we're in the middle of a raging wildfire right now. To belabor the metaphor, for me, it makes no sense to invest resources and energy into a program that aims to put out campfires before they spill over, while the region we're monitoring has already been set ablaze. So we need to emerge from the height of the pandemic first, before we can take advantage of this important and great tool. Contract, contact tracing and rapid testing currently offer our schools far better resolution in terms of telling us, of spotting potential outbreaks and stuffing them out. And I heard this from Dr. Hep-
Hep.
-directly, too, the resolution is only as good as the sewer system. Right now, wastewater testing will only tell us what we already know, that COVID is running rampant in our schools and in our community. I do think that later, when the pandemic is effectively over, but COVID remains lurking as part of a new public health reality, that wastewater testing can and will provide us with radar blips that we can act upon when our focus on COVID mitigation is low and we're distracted from taking those extra measures like constant, ongoing, rapid testing and contact tracing in our schools. I'd rather spend the money, the proposed 50K being discussed, on more immediate help, again, for rental assistance and other mitigations for community members who will be hit hard by the expiration of the eviction moratorium and jobless benefits, or toward alternate care services and housing assistance programs that we've already discussed. I think it's interesting, the, this, this didn't come up from anybody in the previous conversation, and perhaps that's only because we all knew this conversation was set aside for itself. But why did this conversation get its own hour at the dais, and in fact, its own entire special session, when every one of those other 15 items could have been given the same attention? have been given the same attention? And I, you know, I just want to add that I think wastewater testing works in our university dorms because we're testing where people actually live. If COVID is identified in a dorm wing, we know who to talk to right away. We can quarantine the problem. The bathrooms in our public schools don't offer that specificity, as Dr. Hep mentioned. The children disperse back into the community at large every day. Other adults come and go, potentially the culprit, but not necessarily. It just doesn't make sense to me right now, and certainly not in the context of a dire emergency, to invest our limited resources into a strategy that currently offers less resolution than other methodologies actively being utilized at this time and into the foreseeable future. I, I won't belabor this point either, but I do have some serious questions about monies passing between the city and the school district. My sense is that Sterling would want to take some time with anything that, that came up along these lines, further eroding the notion that this is an emergency that needs to be dealt with immediately. You know, there are legalities, and there are genuine pitfalls associated with municipality gifting funds to a school district. I don't think it's a good practice for either side to be in. And I know that the previous council resisted the temptation to do that very same thing, specifically with Head Start funding, I believe, at other times. So that's kind of where I stand. I also just wanted to mention that I have some serious concerns about the broad dissemination of COVID outbreak data from certain schools, but not all schools, and how that information can be weaponized and, and used in ways that are negative and hurtful. I, I could see a lot of armchair epidemiologists arising with this data coming out. And I, I just, I, I think that's going to get very messy. And the cross-jurisdictional spat about how to react to these data spikes with different colors of money being involved very much concerned me as well. I don't think we're ready to figure this out yet, but I do think it, in the long term, it might be, it might very well be a valid and important strategy and tool for us, just not right now.
Thank you, Councilmember. Others? Councilmember McCarthy.
I'm not hard over one way or the other on this. I'm actually, in spite of my hard questions, I think I, I could see that it has value. So maybe I'm somewhere around 50/50 on this. But I'll tell you, when it comes to spending money on housing and some of the other things we talked about on the last agenda item, I'm not 50/50 on those things. I'm 100% in back of those. So that's kind of an indication of my support of this issue. I'm not dead set against it, but I'm not enthusiastic either.
Thank you, Councilmember. Others? Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. I guess my question is, can we table this and come up with a guideline on when to revisit it? As Councilmember Haslin talked about, maybe now is not the time for this program, but maybe come January, when hopefully things are slowing down in, in this pandemic and the testing may be more useful. I don't know, Crystal. And again, I appreciate that you're here. I'm just, I, I see value in this, and I don't want to just scrap it, but I am kind of thinking along the lines of Councilmember Haslin that maybe right now is not the time. Thank you.
So from a procedural perspective, I just wanted to speak quickly to that use of the term "table." Generally speaking, that just means set something aside and come back to it later. If there were to be a motion, the word "table" actually is a term of art in our rules of procedure that means it's back here next week. It would be a motion to postpone until it, it needs to be brought back, however that's to be determined. But that's procedurally speaking. Back to your question as far as the color of money and jurisdictional lanes and those sorts of things. If there was a direction to move, you know, forward with something like this, yes, there would be some, some work, but with the ARPA funding, from what I'm aware of, that is eligible for this. And there would be some, just additional work to dot i's and cross t's that I would like me and my staff to have the opportunity to do, if that eventually comes to fruition as far as moving forward. Thank you.
I think as opposed to tabling this, we would just bring it up again at a future date.
Sorry, I used the incorrect term, but yes.
No, no, I, what you were saying is, is an option. I'm saying that we should just let it go and then keep it in mind for a future agenda item down the road, once, once it's clear that we're ready for tools like this.
And my apologies, Councilmember Sweet, I, I didn't mean to, you know.
I'm learning.
No, it's, it's, it's something that, that's just a term we all use to set something aside and come back to it later. I've been in meetings, however, where if that comes up, somebody makes a motion to table, right? You know, the next thing. So I, I, I just wanted to make sure and everybody was aware of that. Thanks.
All right, anywhere, anyone else? I think we all know where I stand on this. And if it's not happening today, I definitely want to bring it up for conversation in the future. So I think that may look like what we're going towards. Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dr., Dr. Hep. Thank you for, for being here tonight and presenting, you know, the science part of And I value the science behind the proposal. And I also share Councilmember Haslin's thoughts. And Councilmember Sweet, too. Is postponed the right term? Postpone this discussion?
That's correct.
Postpone at a later date? Do we have to set the date, a month?
No, you don't have to set a date certain. That, that isn't necessary, but a motion to postpone would be appropriate if that's something that, you don't have to do it, you can always come back to it later. But either way, if you're going to set it aside and formally want to put it on the record that you're coming back to it, a motion to postpone would be appropriate.
So we need a motion to postpone?
If you formally, as a council.
No, we don't. We could just vote it down.
Okay.
And then bring it up at a future date.
Yeah, okay. So I, I am interested in bringing it up at a future date to have a robust discussion and informed decision. I'd like to hear from the, the Coconino County Public Health and Human Services Department because they are our, in fact, our public health authority locally. And I would like to hear from Dr. Dave Engelthaler of TGen. And I also want to hear back, want to hear from the different principals, superintendents, and principals of charter schools, as well as, as PTOs and students. I want to hear from our students, whether FUSD or charter school, to have an informed discussion on this matter.
All right. Well, one thing I didn't mention, but I think we all need to keep in mind, too, is we talk about workforce development quite a bit. It's a big buzzword. And the, these kinds of projects provide a lot of opportunities for lab technicians and entry-level positions in the sciences. And especially as we're seeing that sector really booming in our economy today, and it's probably worth thinking about in our minds, too, that this isn't even just about COVID, it's about many pathogens. And it is a workforce development opportunity when we're here talking about job training, skills, and making sure we have the skill sets we need in our city for the growing economy. So I'm just throwing that out there, too. But here you are loud and clear, and I think we're, Councilmember McCarthy.
I just want to say, when we talk about this next time, I would like an epidemiologist to be here.
All right. Well, that brings us to Agenda Item 16A, Future Agenda Item Request. Thank you, Dr. Crystal Hep, for being here. And for Superintendent Pensa, if you're still on, thank you. Thank you for your time for being here so late. Item 16A is Future Agenda Item Request, a citizen's petition seeking to limit the on-street parking of all recreational vehicles, campers, boats, camping vehicles, trailers, et cetera, and any other trailer to 30 calendar days with a possible appeal to the city for an additional 30-day extension for a maximum limit of 60 days per calendar year. Do we have any individuals to speak to this, the person who filed it?
Mayor, the petitioner is not connected online at this time, so it would just go to you, Council, for discussion.
All right. Anybody want to pick this up? Councilmember Shumoni.
I'll just say I'm not interested. Thank you.
I am, but in terms of having a further conversation, I'm not saying one way or the other, how, what my position would be, but I think this is a worthy discussion topic for this, for this council.
Yes, Mayor.
Me as well.
I don't know how I would come down on this, but I do think it's worth the discussion.
And I as well. I, I think it's worth having the discussion. I'm not saying how, all vote in the end, but worth, worth moving forward.
And so do I. I'm enthused to, to have a discussion on this matter.
And I'm glad to discuss, but as we agendize these things, I would like to prioritize the parking in people's homes on their driveway, that expansion, because people got to put their vehicles somewhere. So since we're already in those discussions, to be able to put a boat, you know, within 10 feet of your driveway on the side, that, let's, let's finish up that discussion, and then we can bring this up, too, because it all kind of fits together. Yeah.
Well, to quote the mayor, this all kind of fits together. So it, it might make sense to have the discussion on these two very intimately related issues on the same evening.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in that. I just think it's a little bit cart before the horse if we, they don't have somewhere else to park the vehicle. So anyways, okay. Well, then we are down to Agenda 16B, Future Agenda Item Request, a request by the Commission on Diversity Awareness through Councilmember McCarthy to place on a future agenda a discussion about equitable restroom availability. Councilmember McCarthy.
I'll just speak very briefly to this. It's really not my agenda item. This comes from the Commission on Diversity Awareness. And I thought that, you know, as we've talked about earlier, we put a lot of faith in our commissions, and they considered this and asked us to consider it. So I will be supportive of it. And in the packet, there was a, a one-page letter from the commission. But basically, what it boils down to is they're saying, at least on city property, if there's a restroom that's basically a one-stall restroom, that anyone can use it regardless of their gender. Obviously, this wouldn't apply to restrooms that have three or four stalls or whatever. And then as far as restrooms that were not associated with the city, that there would be a recommendation on it, but nothing binding. It just kind of reminds me, I was at Macy's Coffee once waiting for the restroom, and one of the employees came over and says, you can use the women's room, it's fine, you know? So I am supportive of this, and at least to have a discussion on it. And I'm sure that hopefully, when, if it does come back, that we'll get some people from the Commission on Diversity Awareness to come and maybe kind of tell us their viewpoint and their reasoning behind it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I am in support of it as well. I think I'm getting lots of thumbs up and head nods, which means we're adjourned.